Now opening the February 18, 2025 special meeting of the Santa Rosa City Schools Board of Education. All right, so we're gonna start with public comment on the agenda item only. Since this is a study session, I'm gonna limit the total public comment to 20 minutes. I don't think we'll even get that far. Are there any other blue cards?
But we are gonna one hand on your line. We are gonna have public comments on the panelists.
Okay, all right. You will have two minutes each. First is Erica Filiponovich, followed by Megan Covey, followed by Heather Grinbaum. So Erica, you get it?
So the timer is gonna be on the screen.
Yeah.
There it is. Okay. You're gonna stand right there and that's probably.
Awesome.
Yeah. Wanna sleep, please?
Hey, thank you. This has been a very up and down roller coaster. I'm sure you all feel the same way. We're all at a very monumental stage in our district's future. And I thank you all for the really challenging work that you're all putting in. I have been advocating for a seven through 12 model, for a model that saved our high schools. And I want to believe that that's still possible. I, looking at data, looking at the numbers, I'm also concerned about our district's ability to right-size and not be in this position again. I want to see our children have a future that's bright and glorious and amazing. I also realize that it's, needs to be very clear to the public that we exhausted every possibility that we had to save our high schools, because this is an impact that will have longstanding consequences, not just on them, but the community and their ability to get future jobs, et cetera. So what I'm saying is that I hope that the district and the board has the feels empowered to come back to the district to ask for the deep cuts that the public is going to demand, regardless of what you should choose and decide to do. If we're cutting between 20 and 30% of our schools, the public is going to demand 20 to 30% cuts at the district level. I understand that we are over-staffed at our schools. We need to look at those ratios and get us back up to where the contracts say. So I understand as a community member, there are going to be a lot of really challenging cuts that are going to be, need to be made. But I also want to trust that you all are looking at these deep cuts across the district because the community is going to need to see that. I think there's a lot of lack of trust. Just looking at the slide deck's changing by the hour yesterday was really unnerving as a community member, and I just don't understand. Thank you. That's amazing, how you did.
Hi, I'm Megan Covey, I teach seventh grade math. I'm Slater. Um, I totally thrive in my classroom. I hate speaking with adults, so I wrote down what I wanted to share. Just as generally speaking in public like this makes me really uncomfortable, which is why I haven't done so so far. Um, I just wanted to say that many middle school and elementary school teachers feel the same way that I do about by shutting, uh, shutting down middle schools and elementary schools on the backs of saving all high schools, it's really hard for us. Um, middle school's a magical place and the teachers can work at middle schools, actively choose to do so because we believe in the years of the critical growth, identity growing, and opportunity for our students. Uproving our lives to appease the loudest voices is not just inconvenient, it's tremendous. Many middle schools, including my own, have felt deeply unseen and disregarded during this process. Let's be honest, save all high schools means do so at the expense of middle schools and elementary schools. I sincerely hope that the district and the board has a comprehensive plan to support not only our students and families, but the dedicated staff who make these schools thrive. Slater isn't just a middle school, it's a powerhouse of opportunity. We offer avid culinary art, five periods of music, yearbook, ethnic studies, art, biodiversity, and the only middle school woodshop in San Antonio. All of these programs make our middle school what it is, but we're not the only ones who have incredible programs. All of our middle schools do. So I just wanted to thank my niece Slater who say, thank you guys for making the hard decisions.
Thank you. Next is Heather Grinbaum.
I love the way you sound well tuned. Just wanna thank you guys. Obviously, this has been seemingly difficult for all, and we really appreciate you all the time you guys being in. I am a Montgomery parent. I proudly wear the sweatshirt. I'm also the vice president of the Montgomery Education Foundation, and I work as a college counselor, both to make an income. And I also volunteer my time to help underprivileged students navigate our college application process. Uh, so I think that's best to talk about what I do know. I know that our high schools are at the end of the line. They have put their trust in you, the district, to launch them into their futures. And I know that their trust is an all-time low. They are scared. High schoolers are out of time. I know that Montgomery is ready to pivot and be flexible. My sophomore daughters and student government, they have already discussed the culture inclusivity at their campus and how they will welcome expanded Monti population. I know this. These are things I do know. I know that our education foundation, who provide grants for different departments, already discussed pivoting to support an expanded population. I know that our administration has already drawn up the plans to welcome the expanded population onto Montgomery's campus. People are ready. These are things I do know. We have a vast offering of sports, music, wire, doesn't exist to other high schools. We have drama. We have all of these things. These places, these programs are already placed. They do not need to be started from scratch. We have a highly diverse staff and student population, and students will find people who are like them at Montgomery. They will find people, they will find people that we know. The accreditation of Montgomery also expands. They have the IB program, already set up curriculum-wise to go to middle school. So expanded curriculum for IB already exists. A seven through 12 model, I'm the one who survived it. It works. It increases community. It will not divide it, I know. It brings people all together. Yes, separate bell schedules, all those things, those can be really, really good. It shows continuity. This is difficult, I know.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Online comments? There are members of the public joining us on Zoom that would like to make a comment on the agenda items only. Please raise your hand. At this time, you have two minutes. Our first speaker is Wyking the Viking. If you could please state your full name for the record.
Hello, thank you so much. My name is Carla Wyking. And I wanna start by expressing my gratitude to the board. I know that you guys are in such an impossible position. And I also respect the fact that you are a part of our community and you want what's best for our kids, so I just wanted to start by thanking you for that. Um, I, I don't wanna take up too much of your time because I really want you guys to get the maximum time to discuss these new options. I just wanted to point out that I noticed on the slides, moving IB was not one of the challenges. And I just wanted to point out that that will be a challenge. And if Montgomery closes, a really big challenge, because we have to move 20 teachers, which means none of those teachers can be fired, and we have to move our principal, and we have to move the students, not just those seeking the full diploma, but those who really wanted to take IB as part of their college preparedness program. Um, so I just wanted to point that piece out because I didn't want it to get lost in the mix. Um, and I, of course, obviously, I love Montgomery and wanna see it go on. I also have two younger students, and I would be very happy to send my son, who's now a fifth grader, to Montgomery as a seventh grader, and again, his younger brother when that time came. So I am in support of that, and I do appreciate all of your considerations. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa DiCarbo.
Good morning.
Go ahead.
Thank you for, thank you for your time this morning. Your decisions on school closures will impact the future of Santa Rosa's students, particularly those in southwest Santa Rosa. This is a critical moment that requires strength, courage, and a true commitment to equity. The district's motto, every student, every possibility, no matter what, should be reflected in your actions. Southwest Santa Rosa has already faced significant challenges, such as the closure of Cook Middle School, which left Elsie Allen without a feeder middle school. Another harmful decision will only exacerbate existing inequities. The community in southwest Santa Rosa is home to some of the county's most economically disadvantaged areas. And the closure of Elsie Allen would place an even greater burden on families. Many students rely on public transportation or juggle multiple jobs just to attend school. For these families, closing Elsie Allen High School would create insurmountable barriers, putting education at risk. The right path is clear. Keep all high schools open. Explore more cuts at the district level and prioritize equity. I know your strength and courage will assist you in making decisions that will ensure every student's education is valued, no matter their background or their zip code. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next speaker is Erin Moore.
Good morning. My name is Erin Moore. I work at Elsie Allen. I just wanna thank you for your time, first of all. Um, and I would encourage you to look at the issues of equity that Lisa DiCarbo just shared with you. Additionally, the district has spent thousands of dollars preparing our teachers to teach ethnic studies, a state requirement. Ethnic studies focuses on the counter-narrative and the stories of and experiences of racialized and marginalized communities. I would urge you to stick with what you are teaching our teachers and what we are in turn teaching our students to focus on those communities and to save the only high school in southwest Santa Rosa. I encourage you to please focus your values on all students, but especially the least among us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Erin. Our next speaker is Kimmy. You can please state your full name for the record.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
You can state your full name.
My name is Kimberly. We met. I am a Proctor Terrace parent. Um, after seeing the updated slides on the projected savings from each proposed scenario, I think it's clear that the 4-4-0, uh, super elementary idea has the least savings of all the scenarios. Uh, besides the minimal savings that the 4-4-0, uh, super elementary idea, um, it, it's distasteful to most parents who do not want to send their little kids to a humongous school on a middle school campus. Um, in fact, a lot of these elementary parents would perhaps leave the district, um, creating even more financial distress for the district. Um, so we advocate for the board to adopt the more equitable and fair to all grade levels, 3-3-1 scenario. This model will actually result in financial savings, that we don't have to deal with all of this uh, trauma again in three to five years. Um, the deep cuts are needed now, unfortunately, and, and the 4-4-0 model, as much as it would be great to save all the high schools, um, it's just not, it, it's not gonna cut it realistically, uh, like the 3-3-1 will. Um, and we also hope the board will adopt the committee's original three elementary schools, that it put a lot of work into determining which schools would, should, should go. Um, and so that's Albert Biella, Steel Lane, and Brook Hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Catherine Rideout.
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for your time and for this hard work that you're doing. I just wanted to draw attention to the added savings that would come with district-level cuts. Um, I believe you all received an email this morning that would outline about a 20% reduction in district-level staffing, which would be at a minimum $4 million in savings. Um, for example, if you look at district staffing and the number of HR in their current model um, of technicians, they have at least five. I work at Kaiser Permanente, which is the larger employee rate, you know, Santa Rosa City Schools is right under us. We only have three HR in our whole department, structured similarly, where our payroll and HR are separate. So I, there are cuts that can be made and still have a functioning district. The board actually, according to, um, AB.
She dropped off, so she comes back on. We can give her some more time. I don't see her here anymore. Our next speaker is Emma. Emma, if you can please state your full name for the record.
Hi, my name is Emma Curtis. Um, I'd also like to thank you for all of the work and dedication you're putting into this. I know it's really difficult, and that no matter what decision you make, a lot of people are going to be unhappy. That being said, I would just like to urge you to take the time to really think about this and what is best for our community at whole. And I do not understand how that is possible if you are going to decide to specifically close a high school next year. It was heartbreaking to me to hear specifically that Santa Rosa high school student who got up and spoke about his experience at the last board meeting. And I'm thinking about, my kids are in TK and first grade right now. And, you know, we'll get through this. I don't think the same can be said for high schoolers, for those high schoolers that are on the brink of, you know, potentially not graduating. Their school closing will, will, you know, will break that for them, and that's going to impact the rest of their lives. Um, if, I'm not in the best position to decide what's needed. But frankly, I don't understand how anyone can be in the short of a timeline. And I don't see how you can close a high school and say that you need to do it in August um, to say, what, $5 million when the district has already spent much more over their budget this year? And say that that is the best thing, um, for the community. If a high school needs to be closed, you need to make more time to do it. Yes, the seven through 12 model is best for the community, which I realize that that is really difficult too, and I don't wanna throw middle schools under the bus. But I do feel like in a lot of ways, that is the most equitable, because all communities are impacted equally. And there's a much smaller, um, portion of the kids' education being disrupted. So I'm, I, I really think my main point is we need to make more time to do this and make sure that it's done right. I understand that no matter what happens, it's going to be difficult, but we can't rush it.
Thank you, Emma. We, how are we running on time? Add, so just one more. One more. I have Catherine who dropped off back on. Should I give her?
Yeah.
Catherine, if you wanna go ahead and.
You're so kind. I'm sorry. Um, it's actually AB 438, so the board actually has the right to tell the district, hey, make these cuts, and, you know, do that collaboratively. But I would just urge the board to really press on this, because if the staffing of a organization, if they have more district staff than even a bigger organization that's similarly organized, that doesn't quite make sense uh, when we're having to do such deep cuts at the school level. Thanks so much.
Thank you. There's one more. Our next speaker is David Greenbaum. This is our last speaker for this morning.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So my name is David Benjamin Grunbaum. I'm the proud parent of a Montgomery High School graduate, and also Montgomery sophomore. First of all, I just really wanna thank the trustees for working so tirelessly on this incredibly difficult issue. Uh, you're so good to be able to do this. We, we know the kind of time you've put into it. Um, so I just wanna clarify a couple things that haven't been said. Uh, at Montgomery High School, obviously, we support saving all high schools, but I do wanna speak briefly about Montgomery. And I wanna make clear, because I just feel this has been kinda muddled sometimes. Uh, Montgomery is the most ethnically diverse high school in Santa Rosa. We are 70% minority. We have not only a large Hispanic population, we also have the largest African-American population in any high school in Santa Rosa. In addition, we have an incredible principal, April Santos. You know what we've been through at Montgomery. She's completely made Montgomery, uh, turned it into a wonderful place to attend high school. Uh, Mrs. Santos has told me she's already planning how to incorporate other students on the campus, whether that's seventh grade or eighth grade or high schoolers from other high schools. Um, you know, they're, they're planning ahead. It's completely up to the board, obviously, to make a decision. We just want you to know we're ready. Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right, that ends the public comment for today. We'll move on to our discussion. Superintendent, do you wanna start us off?
Sure. Um, we have presented some scenarios on the slide deck, and we know we shared the live document because we've been working on it. We're probably gonna work on it as, as we prepare for tomorrow. Uh, so these are scenarios we really need to hear from the board today around, uh, what else we need from us uh, to really be ready for a vote tomorrow. So with that in mind, what is it that you need from us? I'll turn over to Lisa this August.
Thank you, President Dally, um, Dr. Morales, and I'm the president of our board and community. Um, so yes, I can bring up the slideshow so that we can go through, but rather than going slide by slide, I think it would, if it, if the board's pleasure, if they can kind of flip through different scenarios as you, as you would like to review things. Uh, Dr. Vardelli also has, um, information that you can pull up related to maps and, and that it's, those aren't as easy to, to turn out. We can give up in the, in the presentations. I will go and bring that back in just a moment.
Other presentation, I'll just look this. Oh, board. I'm wondering if we can maybe start by eliminating scenarios that we are not interested in. I can share my thoughts, but I also don't wanna abuse my powers, President. Anyone who'd like to start off, is there a scenario that we are particularly concerned about and not interested in? Trustee Jenkins?
That's it. Actually, I did this. I'm not interested in the mega elementary. Um, and I think that all of the middle schools being converted to 712s, um, I'm also not interested in that.
Uh, currently, I have no interest in what we're, I think that's feasible and, um, implementable. So that's something, and I also just, like, I don't see in our community, a mega or super elementary being something that families send their students to. Um, and I don't see our community continuing to refine our students, send their students, that we collapsed all the middle schools. Uh, it's just, it's, it's too much. We're, we're asking for a lot already. Um, we're doing the best we can. You guys have done a tireless, amazing work, and we appreciate that to give us these numbers to look over and all, but the mega elementaries, the no middle schools, and the 4-4-0 scenario, I just don't.
Could we perhaps each give our thoughts on the 4-4-0? Trustee, can I?
So I felt like I was very much still with the 4-4-0 at the last study session. Um, I had to do a lot of soul searching, especially after hearing from the other members of the board, their interest in.
Can you speak after?
Oh, sorry. Some symptoms, and I need to project. Um, so I had to do a lot of soul searching after the last study session because I definitely, even leaving the session, wanted to stay with vision outlined for the 4-4-0 from the opportunities at the high school level. And, but the realization that that would come with a significant logistical, um, challenge for the district that is not just stretching, but likely breaking our ability to, to execute. Um, and then also the real understanding of what it would mean for merging a bunch of elementary schools on your middle school campus. Uh, I just, I agree with Trustee Jenkins and Dale Torre that it's just not a feasible option for us to, to continue talking about. Um, and so, yeah, that's where, where I'm at with it. I, I don't want to be there with it. I, I saw a vision with it, but we don't have the time to, to go there and not decimate the elementary, uh, district. And, and I got, we gotta recognize that while there are other elementary districts, that's the same as saying we're, we are also a Roland Park High School district. We have, uh, the casino is in our district, and so just because there's other elementary districts in Santa Rosa, in the city of Santa Rosa, our boundaries are, uh, about the city boundaries. It's about the school district boundaries. And, you know, to, to say that the students in our elementary district shouldn't have the same access to neighborhood elementary schools just isn't the route that we can go solely because we also reorganize the district. That's where I'm at with the 4-4-0.
Trustee Kirby?
Hi, yes. Um, before, before we start discussing all the scenarios, I, I just want some clarification just for us and the public, uh, because I think all of us saw that, you know, uh, corrections, additions, subtractions were being made to all these slides, uh, you know, up to the last minute here. Um, can we just verify that, I know, for example, the, when we brought up the last meeting, there had been some, uh, um, realizations that further cuts might be needed with the governor's budget, uh, announcement that came through. Can, can we just take a moment to, for them to verify what has been updated since the last meeting on, on the scenarios?
So specifically, um, if we're looking at the, so we didn't, the last board meeting did not include the scenarios in the same way. So what we've done with these is created a, a three-year timeline for each of them, along with the projected savings in each of those three years and the space capacity, along with, um, opportunities and challenges. So that's essentially where we are with that. We have not updated, uh, made any changes to the revenue side, which is what would be the, um, projection with the governor's, um, budget. We are working on those right now. Um, I can't say that we have looked at revenue side as far as if we were to lose 5%, you know, 7%, you know, 2.5 or 7, I think, um, those are the options that we look at. From an enrollment and ADA perspective, not incorporating the, the reduction, you know, the projected um, call up for the, for, you know, those things, because again, we're just where we are in the process for first interim, our secondary updates. So I can say that here, we do have, based on that, on first interim projection, was larger. This is just, this was a, so here was our, our projection at first interim, and then on the, I think we were to lose roughly 2%. And what we assumed with this was a, a corresponding reduction in our unduplicated people count. So, because otherwise, if we left that, where the number didn't change, then you know, that's, that would be, you know, this is a skewed way. Um, we have no way to identify where we expect those students to be lost from, whether it would be duplicated or not. Did or not? Again, that looks like, um, now, and I take. That looks like now, and I take I'm looking at things of I'll have to double check real quick with Joel reach out because that was what when he and I spoke was adjusting that more. So it looks like where we have, sorry, as I'm looking at this, that doesn't make sense. And we have a definite harmless or a three year rolling average. So that's why you see a lesser reduction in that first year because we won't see a huge drop one way or the other in that first year. It won't be until until years to in the out years because it is. Remember, our whole harmless is we're funded on bits up for charters. So comprehensive schools only. We are funded on the highest measure, whether that's current year ADA, prior year ADA, or bowling average of three years. So that's why you won't see that huge swing in year one. It'll be in year two and three, where you see the large swing. You can see it's really only, you know, probably a thirty thousand dollar difference one way or the other in that first year, based on the on the drop in a moment. So I know that that wasn't in the presentation. It's just the information, you know, one of the questions that was asked at the last meeting to bring forward. And that doesn't tie the in one scenario. It was just them both alone.
Yes. Trustee Kirby, did that answer your question?
Partially. The and just to review the the savings that you're the projected savings, those are net savings or gross savings?
Those are net.
Net, right. Okay. Thank you for that. And back to the since we were talking about the four four oh stairs, I also am not in favor of that particular scenario. And you know, for a lot of the reasons that the previous trustees were discussing, I I just don't feel that it I feel that it's going to impact too many, too many of our people. I just don't I don't see the mega elementary scenario fitting into our to our district. I would be against that. That's all I got for now.
Thank you. Trustee, any thoughts?
Yeah, everything that's already been said. I've also kind of been spending a lot of time talking to folks, especially at the elementary level families of elementary aged kids, because we haven't heard a lot from from those folks and have really come to the kind of clear vision that that's not the that's not our way forward. So I'm I'm also not in favor of the four four.
Again, everyone. I feel the same way. I am based on feedback I've gotten from the community. I'm not interested in the mega elementaries. I also, as much as I like the idea of seven twelve, I don't want to force that on the entire community when there are folks in that community who are not interested. And just the logistics of facilities and making those changes happen by August just seems unrealistic. So can we eliminate four four zero?
Is there any objection to us moving that on the slides so we can?
Yeah, I just got to put a line right through it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, go for it.
Thank you. So we're talking about the four four elimination of it. And we're along the same mind frame of the seven twelve only model, which is in parentheses, three four oh is not the same conversation that we're not ready to do a seven twelve only collapse all our middle schools by closing multiple elementaries and all the middle schools just in favor of a seven through twelve high school because facility wise, implementation wise, community impact wise, this is going to be a monumental impactful decision as everybody has discussed time and time again. And the more we could spread that out, the more it's going to ease the pain that we're all going to be feeling. And I think this seven through twelve, it kind of falls along the same lines as the four four oh attacking one area to help. If I see that differently, let me know. Also, it looks like the seven twelve parentheses, three four oh model only guesses a twelve point five in year three projected savings. So it seems to be a slower burn to get to a number that ultimately is going to increase that we need to we need to save higher and then we'll get off the road regardless. So that's my next take on one of the scenarios was presented.
Um, I actually really appreciated scenario three four oh. I still feel strongly that we need to preserve our high schools. And I really appreciate the phased approach. That's something we hadn't really talked about before. And so I kind of I would like for staff to walk us through that phased approach and how would you came to that to that conclusion, that this is what that would look like. And kind of to your point, it is it is a slower burn in terms of our our meeting, our our financial kind of goal, but if it if it also helps us make sure that implementation goes better than just a quick ripping off of the Band-Aid, I'm I'm definitely for that. And really, again, it's because I think we need to consider a scenario where we're preserving our high schools.
So for purposes of this stage of the study session, I also want to continue talking about the three four zero. I think it has the ability to also contrast with some of the other options that we're looking at because of the phased approach. I will say that I don't like the budget savings and not implying to do something that's not going to get us to a place where we have the resources to reinvest in our academic programs at the end and year one. So it's more for the sake of the conversation that I think talking about the three four zero is important right now, but it would have unfortunately, leave several million dollars short in the first two years of what we need to not have to further erode our academic programs. So I'm just, I have a mixed thought on it and not wanting to eliminate from conversation just quickly. And I'll save the rest for when we get into deeper conversation, but when we start to talk about the phased approach, when we start to talk about some of those options, I think we're going to need to also talk about maps in more detail. Because which neighborhoods go where in which year and how we're transitioning is as important to the decision. And so, you know, if the school is going to be closed in year two, how are we transitioning? So understanding the maps is a part of knowing that we're doing our due diligence on the on deciding to go in a phased approach direction versus an all in one year option. So I'll leave it there. That's my current thought is to keep it for discussion, but just knowing that the budget numbers are
I agree with everything that's been said. I'm I'm very concerned about combining all of the middle schools with the high schools period. It takes out parent choice. And personally, I know I've spoken about this before. I have a twin brother and we had very different off. We had very different school experiences. And not everybody fits into a seven to twelve, unfortunately, and just logistically, it's really challenging, but I do want to go through the conversation because I, you know, if there's anything that we're missing, you know, we want to make sure every single stone is uncovered today. So I'm very open to to continuing that conversation.
Yeah, my concerns with the three and the four zero are that it still is faster than I would like it to be and takes away that choice like trustee Jenkins said. But if I don't know if we do it any slower, it doesn't meet our budgetary needs. I mean, the way I would like seven twelve to happen would be starting at just one or two high schools, not four high schools. And yeah, I am not comfortable with but I don't. If we could close Comstock and absorb those into Heiner and Elsie and then either close Santa Rosa Middle and absorb those out or close Slater and absorb those into Montgomery. I'm not comfortable closing Santa Rosa and Slater. Just seems like too much. Oh, trusty Kirby, what do you think?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I I agree with President McNally's discussion and others there. I I'm fine leaving it in the mix for now, but yeah, and to trustee Caston's comment about the maps, I really want to be able to dig in there a little bit. I I just agree with the, I think it's I think it makes to me more sense to, I I do like the phased in approach for one and but I agree also that this may be a little bit too much at in year one. I don't think that we can do it and do it well. So I would I would agree that I I'm fine with leaving it on if if someone wants to leave it on, but I I think it would need some serious adjustments and it doesn't meet our financial needs. So if someone wants to leave it on, it's fine. I I probably would not end up voting for this particular scenario, but without some serious adjustments.
Thoughts on the three four zero for now? Come back to it later. Which we talked about the three one one.
The three one one has changed drastically in such a short amount of time. While I have said before, I went to all of the consolidation meetings. And I found the outcome to be sound. I'm very grateful, but I don't like the I cannot see a reason to close tracks in the three one one. So like the center is a high and center is a middle, Montgomery and Slater, Comstock and Heiner, like that makes zero sense to me. And unfortunately, the savings are just not there, any of them. So those are my thoughts on everyone's. Have a vote yes or no. We should continue that conversation.
I went I I went back and rewatched the board meeting where the fire floor gave the direction to pursue a three one one to the committee in order to focus the work. And to me, it seems like it was a decision more to focus the work of the committee than saying that it was going to actually achieve an outcome because the work hadn't been done yet. And I think that that actually resulted in a good conversation, the ability for the committee to come back to us with the rankings and lots of alternative ideas that we're now able to use. And I see all of the work that we from the committee throughout all of the scenarios. And then revisiting it and recognizing that that was direction given before the work had been done. So it wasn't a predetermined outcome that three one one would work. It also in that meeting, it was said that the fiscal stabilization, when he's right, foundation wasn't for specific school pattern. It was for any specific savings. And the board was giving the direction because paying specific savings would have been substantially more complex for the committee. The other committee who hadn't had all the financial stuff to be able to through it. So for all for all of that, I think the three one one scenario served a valuable purpose. But it not only doesn't hit none of the scenarios hit the financial savings targets overall. And when you look at the capacities, it doesn't bring us to a place where we'll be efficiently using the space. So in years three and four, we very much could be back at this table, closing another school based on recurring demographic projections. So similar to not wanting to leave this process without the resources to do better in our remaining schools. I also don't want to leave this process and come back to this conversation. And I see all of the three one ones resulting in the scenario where we will continue to have excess capacity in the twenty nine thirty year to the point where another school closure would be a possibility. So for me, and continue to discuss the three one one similar to the three four zero may have benefits for the purpose of our conversations, but it doesn't have a benefit from the end outcome. And so but different from the three four zero where I think continuing to talk about it all to turn it, it doesn't close a high school is important for our conversation. I don't see that as being necessary with the three one one. And so I'd be okay with moving past the three one one and not continuing conversation on it.
So just to be very clear, the previous board that President McNally, Vice President Manarian and myself sat on did not give a directive that we wanted to see a three one one. We approved an amount, a number for the budget stabilization plan. And the three one one was offered as an example of how we might be able to get to that number. At no point did the board say we need to see a three one one. That's what we're trying to do. That being said, this has gone through a lot of different reiterations. For example, I don't like seeing tracks being moved to an elementary school campus. If anything, this district should be looking to expand tracks to a five through eight model and increase revenue for something that is been of value for almost twenty years to this district and is drawing students. So that's something that we need to discuss at some point of are there options to grow that program and not keep it five, six model and move somewhere else? Because it's gone through so many changes and ultimately just does not hit the savings that we're looking for. That's what this is all about, right? Sizing our budget, the right side of our district. And if we're presented with a model that doesn't get us there, there might not be much to talk about. It has added value to be a point of comparison of what things could look like. As much as I do not want to close a high school at all, it has to be a part of the conversation because throughout my community engagement through this entire process, unfortunately, one of the main things that I continue to hear is there are certain schools within our district that the community to this day will not send their students to. That is a reality. So now how much, how much or how much we do for these campuses, if they're still in negative community stigma attached to some of our campuses that they will not send our students to. So how much more are we going to do to save a high school that community members may not send their students to? And then we have to close it anyways. So that that's why it has to be part of the conversation to discuss potential high school closures. As much as I don't want to do that, it has to be part of our discussion so that we can make the best decision forward tomorrow evening to try and get this district back on the right track. So it has room for growth, stability and opportunity. So that's my take on through.
I want to step back from the scenarios for a second and ask this as a matter of process before we start narrowing down which school within the scenario that we have a brief conversation about how students from any school that needs to be closed will transition to another school. Doesn't need to be the full plan, which I think we should get presented tomorrow. But I want to be sensitive to everyone listening in right now and and for the community to know that any closure isn't going to be a you know, we're we're just moving kids without any thought to that process before individuals may get a sense of where the board may or may not go. Is that okay?
Yeah. Could you speak briefly on what we've planned so far?
Yeah. So when we consider how
Uh, yeah, so when we consider how um this impacts the potential for transfers. It's important to acknowledge that the way that our current board policy and administrative regulations are written. We will continue to allow within the capacity of any school. The opportunity to request a transfer to another school. Currently, the way that we allow intra-district transfers. Is not, uh, we don't start with the capacity of a school and then say free for all or lottery. But we actually approve transfer requests by priority. So if we determine that a school has the capacity for a hundred transfers, I'm just going to make numbers up. We have established priorities and that's the waves in which we approve transfers. So the first is to protect a continuing student's right to attend that school. So if a student is already. A particular high school or middle school or elementary, we continue them within those numbers. That's the first priority.
Thanks, can I just?
Please.
Really quick, um. Does that include every grade? So I, I recall something in the last meeting about it being more like sophomores and juniors, but does that include freshmen? For instance, like freshmen who are out of school, do they get priority this day sophomore year?
Depending on space, yes, that is our highest priority. So if a school, um, and we set at the beginning of every school year, we do what's called a capacity resolution. And the capacity resolution is that we have an annual commitment that is brought to you the board every year in August. And we define under special education what a capacity of a special education program might look like. How we determine when a program is full and we said, we have been setting. The capacity of schools at ninety percent. So once a school's projected enrollment or actual enrollment, depending on the time of year. Has hit ninety percent of the established capacity, that's when we begin to limit and to close transfer requests. We have hit that capacity in the past, we've hit it by November. And we have said, rather than saying yes to every priority, we do have to at times close a school to capacity. The reason that we set it at ninety percent is to allow for people who live in that neighborhood. Who might be moving in June or July or August to be able to have space at their own school. If we in October, November. Load up the entire school and say, you know, there's an extra seat, let's just keep moving transfers out. Then we get to a place that nobody wants, where somebody might live across a seat from their school. And not be able to actually leave their school.
Do you mean October, November of the previous year?
Correct. So what we expect families at this point, and this is by the board policy. They apply from October first to November fifteenth. To request to attend a school other than their neighborhood school the following month. We have an incredibly limited, we have three reasons. Opportunity to do what we call a mid-year transfer or a transfer after the window, but that is where we typically sit. So right now at this time, we have somewhere between six hundred and seven hundred requests. For August to attend a school other than their neighborhood school. We let families know that typically we inform all families of their status by the end of January. Due to this pending decision that will impact our schools, we let families know that we aren't processing those requests until this. Because we know that once a closure or consolidation decision is made. We will need to do a few steps, we will need to determine the new capacity of each school. If we redraw boundaries, how does that impact enrollment? Somebody may have said, I want this to be my school and it turns out. And you don't have to go through the transfer process at all. Um, we have made the commitment to our community to reopen that invitation to any school that is directly impacted. So if a family's school has been closed, we will be reaching out to those families to ask. Now that your school is closed, this is your new school, do you have, you know, a desire to put in a transfer? But at this moment, we cannot make a guarantee, but that's not different than any other year. Every single year, we tell families, you can submit a request for a transfer and we will endeavor to meet those requests. But we can't make that guarantee any. It's just going to be more intense this year.
Right.
Is that what you were asking? Were you asking about how schools are going to receive? Incoming students?
This is a part of what I was asking.
Okay.
But if I can clarify in terms of it, um, and I received some very well thought out requests from schools that may or may not be impacted. About how to handle, um. How to handle it. So if I didn't, I'm just going to state what I'm hearing and then you can tell me how much of it's currently in policy and how much is not. Uh, you know, so I think one of the, one of the things I'm hearing is that. For clothes, for schools that are closing, especially for students that are in specialized programs. That it's not just about being reactive to requests from the parents, but being proactive in saying, your student. Would have a similar or superior experience on this campus in this program. And um, and proactively supporting the management of that type of a transfer. And in lieu of waiting to see what they would ask for, and so that's an experiential element of it, but then. Also within the priorities list, giving priorities to students that be transferring. Or that be leaving a closed school into a program that's not offered at all schools. Um, you know, so if there's one program on school A and there's a program on school B, that there be. A higher priority for that student to be able to stay in the same educational experience that they currently have. Specifically for spent students. A concern around any, because we're simultaneously talking about. Um, over identifying student population. And specifically having a presumption for the first year that the identification isn't an over identification. That would essentially freeze all accommodations for one year for transferring to schools so they know they can have the same supports. At campus A to campus B. It's just even if it may be an over identification, but so that we're not having a different. New experience and they have more predictability in how their educational environment is going to be similarity. Um, and then as for how the new schools are receiving them, uh, you know. An element of positivity embrace, um. Having been one of the parents in the district that's actually getting through a school closure and, and move, um, uh, it's uh. That, that's actually almost more important than any of the policies because if we don't have that welcoming culture, it's going to be talking about, so. Within that. Is all of that required in our policies or what would we might have to consider? To make sure that happens.
Well, and, and I'm going to defer the questions about the continuity of the program, continuity of service to John Fisher. But I do want to speak, so do you want to speak to the continuity of service and then I'll talk a little bit about. The rebuilding and reliance, uh, or resilience alliance that.
In, in the non-spent.
Correct, yeah, correct.
Sure, so um anticipating that there will be school closures where specialized programs and I um referring to. For example, ESN program or our uh extensive support, counseling and rich program or. Set programs are RICE program, um, our new behavior program, um, et cetera. We expect there to be. Absolute continuity in terms of the, the, the programs. In fact, for in terms of, for example, bathroom access, um, at different levels and so forth. Um. And um, our, our hope is as we move those programs, particularly in the ESN world, we're able to move them, move them in, in groups of three. That saves some of the advantages we have be clustered at two particular schools. Which I think both philosophically, we, we would like to have students placed near to their. Um, home school. That said, I don't anticipate any significant disruption in terms of, of services and, and, and program. So specifically for our efforts around over identification, sure, I. I would not want to see someone both have their school transferred and be seen as having been inappropriately identified in the same year. Okay, and so I guess I'm asking, is that? Would we as a board need to take action to address that concern or is that a concern that staff would? Consider for the transitions and this? I, I think that's a concern that staff would consider for the transitions. There's, there's going, I, I take it there's going to be a significant change just moving from one school to another to our students in a. I'll say a relatively protective environment and we wouldn't want to have a particularly big shift in that. Um, that said, uh, in, in other areas, we, we do always look at assessment practices and so forth, and one of the. Um, recommendations from the special education study was to look at our so-called identification rate, um. And I, I, again, um. Our, our goal is not necessarily to quote unquote exit students from special education, but provide the students the appropriate supports, whether they are in the general education or in the special education system, so. Um, I, I, I think in terms of the transitioning, uh, as a result of school consolidation and school closure, staff will take that into consideration that we don't have. Disruption of service.
You know, I said parent or students requesting that that's different.
That, yeah, oh, oh, yes.
I'm referencing that we're deliberately like, I'll use. Uh, speech classes as an example, so I think that's one of the categories, like, I wouldn't want a student to both. Stop having that pattern of support and change campuses in the same year.
Okay.
So that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, to the extent possible, of course, that's al- al- always up to the individual IEP team and we can't.
Parents, I know, parents are in there, yeah, yeah.
Exactly, but um, okay, no, I don't anticipate issues in that area, thank you.
So um, in the consideration of the impact of these decisions, I, I think it's important to recognize that this is something that. We, Santa Rosa City Schools, the wellness and engagement, we cannot tackle the con- the, the impact, the community impact. That we are all dealing with alone. We have to approach this from a public health model and I, because it is not Santa Rosa City Schools. That is going through this. Every single morning we open the newspaper and there's another article about a. District who is going through massive cuts, they are going through program changes and. When we think about this through that kind of public health lens, they are all our students. Whether they are currently our students or will someday come to us. We are all Santa Rosa and we need to look at it through a community approach. No one's school will be the solution to this, the. Whether it's a social, emotional or a mental health or the physical impact of making these changes. So we have begun work and we're calling it an alliance, um, rather than a study team or a group or an organization. Because this is a commitment of larger than Santa Rosa City. Uh, programs coming together and saying, how do we as a community help our students through this difficult time? The, we're calling it the school rebuilding, uh, resilience and rebuilding alliance. Right now, it includes Santa Rosa City Schools, um, staff, psychologists, uh, school-based therapists. Um, and, and we're reaching out into other areas. We've included the safe routes to schools. Because we know that one of the massive impacts is going to be, how do I get my student from school A to school B? We are including community matters, uh, restorative resources and the CHOPS teen club to look through the lens of community rebuilding. We have also invited, um. Uh, the Violence Prevention Partnership with all of their allies to come together and to start asking what are our needs? We are approaching it through acceptance therapy model so that we can look at the acknowledgement of the impact that change is having. And a process of addressing that rather than saying to our community, don't worry about it, it's not that big a deal. Acknowledging that this change is going to keep on. Um, so we are in the process of doing that work. Once we have a greater sense of what our district will be playing. The actual technical side of what are our next steps are already, um, speculatively in the process.
Just don't worry. Um, so I want to go back to board policy real quick, we hear that often and especially right now, um. We are. In an emergency situation. Trying to decide on an abnormal response. To react. Solve a dire need that needs to be dealt with and I do not want our team. To be limited by. Routine board policies. On how we react, so. Do we need to amend policy or do we need to interject and allow? The team to respond within parameters approved that are outside our normal board policy. Obviously, the dates you just mentioned are past. We haven't decided on what schools are going to be closed or not closed. So that's a whole other window. Of issues that our community is going to be faced. And the shorthandedness that our team's going to have to make those decisions. So we need to do something collectively with board around policy. To make sure you have the tools and resources to do what you need to best serve our students and their families. I want to make sure we are being proactive about that and we are not limited by, well, we did what board policy said in a normal board policy. Linear timeline, because nothing is normal about any of this. So if we need to have those discussions, I'd like to be much more proactive about that board policy discussion. To make sure you guys have the tools and resources needed. Um, I think of this much more in an emergency triage situation. Where we are triaging the different parameters and making sure that people get what's needed, where needed, when needed. Uh, opposed to, well, this is the policy, we did what the policy said, we can't do anything else. I don't want you guys limited by that, yeah.
The good news is that board policy is the what and it is the administrative regulations, that is the how we do it. We do have more flexibility within our administrative regulations to be able to make those kinds of adjustments if needed.
And if you need more, please let the board know.
Absolutely.
Because that's our position to be able to provide the more where needed. And we, and again, I, I have said I'm speaking for all the board's members, but we understand how serious this is. And we want to make sure you guys have the tools and resources needed. Um, for these ladies, it's as difficult as they're going to be.
Also, and I don't know if this is when I asked for this or who I asked for this, but with this, um. Collaborative group that will be. Working on taking care of our communities, move through this, so fun for me, um. I'm starting to cry. But uh, I'm hoping that we will, as the board, uh, will be getting. Regular updates on how that's going so that it's communicated very transparently to us, but then also to the community. Um. Because, you know, we are trying to be as transparent as possible with the whole process to rebuild, uh, some of that trust back. Uh, for our entire community, so just being as transparent as possible without being working.
So I want to very specifically state a prioritization example and know whether or not it's in the AR currently. So we talked about opening back up, prioritization A is not displaced students. Prioritization B would be, um, based on what the district's already announced, a new round opening for displaced students to have preference. Is it currently a preference where a program-specific student would have preference to this specific program?
That is one of the existing priorities. So one of the things that we have already begun discussing in cabinet is a potential. Um, reprioritization because, um, right now there are seven. Different priorities when we are talking about intra-district transfers.
Right.
Um, and it includes everything from, uh, I lost my home as a natural disaster. Um, I am a child of an employee. I have a sibling who is currently enrolled at the school, not a sibling who used to, but an actively concurrently enrolled sibling. Um, I have been, uh, selected in a specialty program. Um, and so we have already begun discussing the need to add a priority which is school impacted by, or my school was closed. Um, and so that, uh, currently is not written in to any of our priorities simply because it didn't exist before. And potentially reordering some of the priorities that currently exist. Um, the last of the priorities is none of the above. And again, the more priorities we put in, the more potential impact to the none of the above category. But we have already begun doing that review and having that discussion. So, yes. It does not currently exist as the AR is.
It's appropriate for AR, so I don't feel like we need to do board policy, but sometimes board will is important.
Mm-hmm.
And so it, I'm, I've talked about it, but I want to make sure that I'm not speaking out of turn with the other board members and really pushing for this program to program prioritization within the displaced school, but I feel that that combined with the case management approach of essentially the concierge of proactively helping those students request it, not waiting for them to request it is vital to making, making this work. So that's my, I don't want to speak out of term of the work.
Are there, is there any opposition to that idea? We give back to the three-one-one.
I have a question about the three-one-one. I, um, do the savings, the projected savings include um, the seventh and eighth grade movements for SR, um, sorry, yeah, for SR FACS and for CCLA, I'm not seeing them reflected in the scenarios.
No, those are all priced separately because they are charter schools and they are funded differently. So, uh, and the movement will be net zero. This is just that instead of using not renting a facility, you know, on Solomon Avenue, now we are going to move to another facility, but uh, it's pretty much a net zero moving a charter school.
It, and that's be- because we have the operational expenditures that come out of there, you know, they're in a different fund. They're not in fund O one. Um, so it's maybe it's a slightly less or slightly more expensive facility goes off shipping cost on actually to the charter itself. So it's, we won't see a huge impact, um, in the, in the general fund one way or the other with those movements.
So do we, do we assume the same for TK six-six for our charters?
For the charters, yes.
Additional question on the charters. There's several movements in here of charters in different scenarios and it, and as we move towards conversation on pha- phasing, um, it seems that one of, there's element of the logistics. There's the element also though of having to amend the charters in order to change locations or models like that. Um, and it seems like a lot of the movements are more about taking better opportunities to allow someone to grow. What's the timeline look like in those types of things? Is it realistic to even contemplate a charter move? As a part of a year one scenario, is it really more realistic to look at it as a year two just because of the other stuff?
And, and yes, that's, so several things come into play with the charters. One, the year of their ring or one. Um, the location, because, you know, we have this discussion, you know, several times at different venues that we have charters technically located outside of where we can authorize charter. Um, of specific grade level, as do other, other districts have charters authorized within our boundaries. And so the, the charter conversations are tertiary, um, because yes, the, the moves logistically, why we can push those out to you know, typically year two or year three, it has to do with one, the, there'll be the lift of getting our comprehensive, you know, our traditional sites moved in the, in the right period of time. Uh, those, that is the priority. Uh, charter review rules, the first one we have is the end of next year. So, you know, there aren't any that have to be addressed in that first year. And yes, if there is a change in location that to any grade level, that should come through a charter revision, a petition revision. So mo- multiple.
To restate it, so you're really good. We should be thinking of the vision of where the charters would go. Year one, so we know there's space to accommodate them, but there's a lot of moving parts and needing to focus logistically on the things we need to focus on by August. So we'll have some more time. We can lay the vision, but we'll have time to finesse the details.
Absolutely.
Yeah, um, couple of things on the three-one-one scenario. So, um, do, and, and this said, have a general question, I guess, for Ms. August. Do any of the three scenarios on this, um, slide, you know, it's got us picking, pick one set. Do any of those sets meet the funding cuts necessary?
In year one, and then because we do have escalating factors, so there you know, we think about that as well, that these costs are based on current year costs versus we would have escalating costs for next year. They come close. Um, any scenario is difficult to get the twelve-five, um, net. And again, that's we, we include increases in costs because that's, you know, the twelve-five is assuming the increased costs. So there's a shift in here, probably, you know, just on the natural of about five percent. And you think of that, it's not a huge difference, um, but we have you know, the, the staff that are there, there's a cost in that. We have Stefan, Stefan Callen plus anything negotiated. Uh, we don't have any negotiated increases for next year yet. Um, and then you have the costs of utilities and all of those things as well. So it is, remember, a combination of things. So no, off the bat, it does not. Uh, and what the reality of that is of any, any scenario that is chosen that does not meet that. Uh, it depends on the level of shortage, what the impacts are. So, you know, I'm sure before we can weather a qualified status as far as, um, looking at, okay, we have enough cushion that yes, we may not be able to meet our obligations in the current or two fiscal, subsequent fiscal years versus the impact of a negative certification is that we will not. And if you recall, we are already meeting our three percent by shifting some interest. So that's where we really don't have a lot of planning. So we do need to be very cognizant. Yes, there are other things that we are putting into place as well with reductions in staffing, with changes in the way that we process internalizing things more in the short term. Um, because that helps us to keep a better eye on things versus when we disperse things out for the sites to, to have more discretionary spending, you know, those are things that we can consolidate and look at way more efficiently. But.
And, and part of the reason I bring up is that, you know, a lot of the other scenarios on the maybe you can scroll to the screen on the over challenges to overcome for the three-on-one. Um, most, a lot of the other scenarios list, uh, does not meet funding cuts, you know, for, on those scenarios, but this particular scenario did not have that statement, but it, so it is true though that, that these scenarios don't. A comment like that should have probably been included, correct?
Yeah, it's on there. It's bullet point five. Yeah.
Oh, it did get added. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. There it is. I just want to make sure that, that, that guy added on there.
Yeah, and, and I, I do, i- if I, if I may, I do want to, um, address the, the reason for the three-one-one. Again, it was an example provided and at the very end of that meeting, it was a reluctant. Yes, we'll use that as guidance because it, it again, coming up with the twelve, you know, just a twelve-five would not have been a possible thing to provide to the committee, but it really did, you know, and I do want to thank the board for providing some parameters of wanting to see additional scenarios because it really did give the committee that flexibility to, to explore those options that will be brought to the public.
And, um, so I should have probably mentioned this earlier when I was talking about the the revelations from last week's governor's budget, but I know it's a moving target. I don't mean to pin you down for a specific number, but, um, what, what is the current as of today, uh, overall, uh, number that we're trying to hit with, uh, the final savings?
And again, that will, I, I can't give you an absolute, what we are looking at, I think, combination. Because remember, we do now have the impact of the self-up as well. And we made adjustments. I, I want to call out that one of the reasons that the numbers were different now as far as the savings is because we already made some reductions at sites. When you think of sharing staff, we did not add sections. So those original three-one-one scenario projections were actually based off of the prior year. And so we already started to make some of those cuts and trims where we could. So those are some savings that are already being realized. So when we, that, that's why you don't see that well, five is something that was run versus, you know, now it looks a little bit less. It depends on the specific combination of schools as well as some cuts that have already been made. We, we didn't staff in the way that we have in the past. We shifted people between sites this year. So you're, you're going to see less of a realization because we've already realized some of those, those savings. I just wanted to to talk about that piece of it. And as just one piece, one of the factors in there. Um, as far as that dollar amount, again, I, I would say that we are looking at whether it's in the current year in this upcoming year or the following year, we have to have room for the increased costs in special education, the reduced revenue expectation. I would say that we need to at a very minimum fit that wanting twenty-two to twenty-four between all overall reductions. And again, it's a some from school site closure, some from staffing, which is a combination of school site agents and district and central services as well as a change to how we are procuring our systems that are in place and our actual budgets for spending in contracts and services and supplies and adding those things. So it's the old number that we updated.
Could you, I'm sorry, but could you repeat it again? Because the, believe it or not, the microphone muffled, right? As you said, the, the amount.
Sure, really, we're looking, I mean, and this is without me running our, our second interim projections to see where we are. You know, I would say probably about a twenty-two million overall combination that, that we need. And it could be, you know, slightly under, it could be slightly over. Um, but that's from all sources. So reductions in school sites, because remember, the more you know, I think he could, could speak to this. If we were to look at just a straight okay, if we looked at all of our staffing as elementary, all of our staffing as middle and all of our staffing as high school. You know, it had one large school for each of those. The staffing that we would need to meet those ratios would be substantially less than what we have based on currently operating twenty-four schools or next year potentially anywhere from, you know, nineteen to, to twenty-two schools. Any of that you know, makes it, makes a huge difference on, on the staffing side. It, it doesn't directly affect.
And in terms of staffing, she says substantial, we're talking well over twenty million dollars. If we created one big, huge elementary, one big, huge middle and one big, huge high school, we are over twenty million dollars over staff in certificates.
And that's not saying that that's, I, I want to clarify. There's nothing like that whatsoever, but just to help, just to help people understand the different, what that means and why why spreading the resources across multiple sites makes such an impact.
That's what we've been saying. Resources have been stretched so thin across all the dif- all the schools that we, we can't keep the current structure. And I wa- I just wanted to make sure that you mentioned the revenue of the self-up that's going to hit in the second interim. Um, can you speak to that? That's for one year, two year, or is that in perpetuity?
So in the first year, it is about, we expect, because we don't have final numbers from them either. We're actually working off of numbers from prior year, uh, to them, between one point eight, one and two million dollars in the first year. So in twenty-five, twenty-six in reduction, in reduced, uh, revenues for sup- for the special, for special education. And then in the second year, it is fully implemented, so roughly four million dollars. And that is an ongoing change. Now that will as our ADA fluctuates, as the ADA, you know, with other schools fluctuate, you know, other districts, all of those things impact that calculation. But that is an ongoing reduction in revenues and when we have a shortfall in special education funding, it doesn't mean that we have an op- that we are able to just reduce costs and services. It actually means that we have to make that up from the general fund, from the unrestricted general fund. It's all general fund, but restricted versus unrestricted. So that's just something really important, um, that those aren't natural reductions that can be made. It's difficult to make reductions on the special education side without having um, staff who, who choose to leave voluntarily or identifying, um, the right supports, whether a student is appropriately identified for special education or brightening the services that are, you know, bringing students back for currently in non-public placements, all of those things impact that.
Nice to follow up on one of trustee Kirby's questions and ask him slightly differently. Using the past as prologue, this year, what was our unanticipated over budget expenditure?
Sure. And, and thank you for that question because part of it, I, I need to make sure that we clarified, which is that much of that overage that people keep speaking about was actually in restricted and it's that we have to budget as if we are going to spend all of the funds and receive all of the revenues in the current year. We know that that doesn't happen and the next year we have to recognize that there's new revenues and new expenditures and we're as carryover funds. And so it's not that we over, that we're over budget by thirteen million dollars. It's about eight million of that was carryover funds. So funds that are reflected in one man or budget that have to then be budgeted for expenditure in the next year. It's about five million dollars in overage and that can be very closely tied to the increase in costs for special education um, in our contracted services and non-public placements.
And to the extent that the state budget over years changes a lot between January, May, eventually June, July and this year, October.
Yes.
How often does the state budget surprise us and give us more money than we're expecting in January?
Hey, well, so, so that, we're looking historically up until this last year. It happened pretty regularly, which is exactly where the one-time funds came. Um, and so between two thousand fifteen and, you know, fifteen, sixteen and, or actually even earlier than that, really looking at thirteen, fourteen up through twenty-three, twenty-four, that happened, you know, for that budget year. For that budget year, um, happening regularly every one of those years. So this is the first year that we have not had that happen.
And that's in part because of the federal funding changes.
That, yeah, it was for several reasons. It was, there were federal. That, yeah, it was for several reasons. It was, there were federal funding um with COVID, federal and state one time funds for that. There were also, um, if you recall the recession, anybody who was in education during that time. Essentially, schools did not receive all of their funding during that time. And so there was, there were. Years of makeup funding where the the state owed the district money and rather than providing that in ongoing funds. Much of that was provided in one time funds. Additionally, there. Yay, in that Governor Brown and Governor Newsom have both prioritized um. Conservative budgeting along with the legislature to say, maybe we don't want to over promise. And so. Once they find out that the funds have come in, you know, revenues have come in better than projected, they have. Provided that in one time funding, it would have been better for us in the long term had that been an ongoing funding increase since two. So there's a a big impact on where the floor is for that based based on how that money comes out of budget in front of the state.
But at least for the first two things you said, COVID and makeup funding, both of those lots of one time funds and exhaustives.
Absolutely. And again, we've been provided guidance that should there be one time funding this year, which is a possibility. It's very possible that could be used up based on what's happened out with the fires. So we should not be including that in our budget projections. What we've done in the last couple of years when that's happened and when there's a maybe yes, maybe no for cuts or increases. We projected two different projection scenarios. Um, one with and one without for the, or just to have an idea of what the those impacts could be. We expect to do that for a second.
Um, I had I had a couple more on the three one one things, if you don't mind. Uh, can we scroll back up to the actual scenario? There. So looking down there, I brought this up a couple of times, I think, but. So in the in the data provided for us is popped in and out a couple of times, but. The last round here, I know we talked, uh, RHS's Ridgeway. It's been included in some and not in some, and now I don't see it again. It's been kind of pulled out. Even though we're talking about closing it and moving it. Can you speak, uh, maybe about i- is there any savings in that, uh, or the. Reasoning behind moving it, um. Anyway, in year two, I I can someone speak to. Whether or not that saves us money or not, or is it zero sum?
I I think several of us can speak to different pieces of that. One of the things Ridgeway itself as a facility is not very expensive to buy. The cost for running Ridgeway has more to do with the way that the program is structured. With very small class sizes, very um low student to counselor ratios. Um, additional administration, there's, it it's really a more about staffing. For the specific program, the way that it's been structured. Some of that is in contractor MOU, but actually in MOU, not in contract. Um, but much of it is not. It has been a choice related to programming, so I will um. End it off in in just a moment here. One thing to keep in in mind is a continuation program. It does not have to technically have its own CDS code or be its own school. It does have to be a specific program. For continuation because there are age requirements, I believe it's sixteen and up. And there are different minute requirements, um, and so it has to be identified separately in order to have that piece. So a continuation program has to operate at a minimum of one hundred and eighty instructional minutes. Versus other, you know, high school programs are two hundred and forty minutes. That a bit, but Yelz wants to speak to staffing, programmatic.
I I think it may have come up as a part of a broader conversation of how we could expand options, a period of options for students. But it doesn't have to be moved for that to take place. Um, it might actually complicate matters um. Because of the fact that it's restricted to sixteen plus, but um, we are looking at the board has last year um. Asked us to look at multiple options or portfolio has been created in terms of with by our alternate coordinator of different options for alternative. Add um students, um, this may or may not be a part of it, but like I said, it's. It doesn't have to be part of this particular process, but more problematic thing, and we continue to do that part on the side.
Trustee Kirby, the idea was that if we were going to move it, it would be great to expand it to an S seven, twelve alternative program. That came up in, and I think trustee Jenkins is aware of the SART. And it came up on the SART as a, as in a goal and objective. To provide um for the district to have a place to provide an alternative placement for our secondary. Where it's a smaller school experience, Ridgeway only does it for um eleventh and twelve. So as as considering, thinking about, not only was that already mentioned in the SART, um, and it's in that plan. But also the idea of thinking differently on how to serve students that we might not be currently equipped to serve students. The idea was to invest in this restructuring and designing, providing that space for Ridgeway to grow into that alternative program.
Well, and and just that recognition that there is a qualitative difference between a continuation program. And alternative programs and we don't want to conflict the two because they are very different. They have different policies, they have different, different opportunities.
That we can continue to offer, but we'll expand on our um programs like Grace.
Yeah, and some of some of the scenarios I know, and and the reason I bring it up, some of the scenarios had involved uh considering moving Ridgeway. Back onto uh some of the larger campuses was kind of honestly defeats the purpose of the whole program because the students are more comfortable. In their smaller environments and thriving because of that, so um, that's kind of why I bring it up a little bit. Um, likewise, I, so I've also gotten the questions, uh, I believe I've kind of posed this to you guys, but. The Lewis Academy, again, people are asking why it's on here and there's no numbers associated with. Any cost savings or closing it down or anything like that, so. Can someone just briefly speak to why those numbers aren't there? I did see the number of portables uh. On that campus included in the final count from Mr. Owen, I appreciate that. Uh, also back to Ridgeway, I did not see the number of portables on Ridgeway as far as capacity and potential use. That would be information helpful as well. If somebody can speak to the Lewis portion.
Yes, the Lewis, because the program still needs to operate, it's really just moving where the. We still realize the savings of the operations from the closure of the elementary school where it would move to. So it's really just shifting those expenses for for that program, so we don't see any cost savings there. Um, what we do have a potential of is. For some income, for some revenues um with a an early learning academy that it that incorporates on the space. On the site, not just Lu- you know, the Lewis program from. You know, that site and and Steel Lane, but also with our partners um. With Sinoma Cam or or something like that, so the there are some potentials for revenue. For the facility side of things with growing a program like that at a more um appropriate site. As compared to where it's at right now, split between Steel Lane and Lewis. Do you want to speak into more to that, or do I cover?
Yes, so yeah, again, thinking of restructuring and redesigning, um, there is a lot of um. A lot of state money, local money for early education. And currently our program, so our our principal from Lila actually oversees the classrooms there, but also about four classrooms on the Steel Lane. Campus, so the idea is to have it in one location, preferably at an elementary where we can actually grow the program. Not only with cinema can, but also now with my hat as first five commissioner. Seeing the the potential growth as we try to restructure something that goes cradle to career. Um, but there is a lot of potential in partnerships to grow our early program. That I know it's very, very long, you know, down the line, but it could be a way to bring in students. As we're offering more preschool um services and more TK classrooms. So that's again, maybe five or six um years down the road, but that's definitely a partnership that we need.
I I want to add one little detail of the partners we're talking about tend to be general education preschool programs. In which we have inclusion programs, so we have uh MOUs with these to place the students there and again, if we were able to host some of these. Uh, children's center, it's our, Snowman can, et cetera, all in one place, I think they're doing. Uh greatly increase inclusion opportunities as well, if we have those stuff on a different site.
As Eric, did you want to speak to the portals?
At Lewis? Yeah, there. Um, I don't think Lila is in any of the portables in the back, John, if you're correct.
Uh, that's, that's correct. There are partners that they can start and start and plus Pacificus and some others are back there, so.
We really couldn't look at relocating those until um we decide what would do with those partnerships.
And then um are there portables at Ridgeway that if Ridgeway were to move, would be moved, because I think that was.
Yeah, they're not, well, they're modular, they're not, they're set on a foundation, right? They're not a wooden foundation like a portable, so they can be moved, they're just harder to.
Like the ones at the.
Like the ones in the back of the yellow, yes.
Yeah, um, all right, so back to the scenarios, I know that this, we need to get on some of this, so the actual. These three one one scenarios, does it, I I guess I'm asking the other trustees, does it make sense? Since since none of these, I say, make uh me our financial needs and cuts. Do we need to discount this whole scenario or discount specific ones of the three? When we're talking about closing middle schools to high schools, that I guess is a general question for everyone. How do we want to address this scenario?
Well, so we've eliminated the four four zero. We have concerns about the. Three four zero, that leaves us with scenarios that close a high school. And on top of that, we've heard from some of our community that they don't want us keeping all high schools open. At the expense of our middle and elementary. So I I agree with trustee Delatorre that we need to talk about this. We need to discuss a potential high school closure. And you know, that's like, that's the worst part of this conversation. The committee left it to us and it's.
Do we have enough room to talk about that in a three, three, one? And we remove the three one one, or do we need to keep both the three one one and the three, three, one to have that discussion?
I think that depends on whether or not we want to consider. Scenarios that we lower revenue targets, so you know, for me and. Keeping the three four zero was important to me for conversations, I wanted to have an option to still talk about closing a high school. But when we're looking at closing a high school. Doing that within a scenario that doesn't reach our budget cuts and means that we may still have capacity. Expanding to where we're back here in twenty nine thirty or earlier, closing the school. I I don't want to both close a high school and not reach our. Our our targets, have resources to invest back into our schools. So none of the three one one scenarios for me would be a place to continue the conversation because. Both closing a high school and not getting a good place where we'll have resources to invest back in.
I have a concern about keeping or about removing three one one right now, um, the three. Three one new scenario on seven twelve um only lists LC Allen as the high school for closure. And so I have concerns around that being our only conversation around closing high schools.
So the the sets that are proposed in the three one one, I think this is my fault because I asked about closing a theater and its high school. Do we have a number more Santa Rosa Middle School and Montgomery High School, just because I'm. We have LC and Santa Rosa.
Okay, sorry.
I I didn't, but we can, we can provide it. It was just, I know that it was asked for a feeder and I didn't want to. Like propose a scenario that was asked directly before.
Yeah, I don't think that's, it was a thought I was having, but now I've heard more about.
I priced it out right now, we want that map done, but.
Yeah, just a price would be great, thank you. Yeah, I I agree that I I don't want the only conversation that we have to be about LC, I think we need to talk about high schools.
And if I can share that the is a, is a Montgomery.
Just Montgomery, so the Garcia.
Oh, so that's what they, yeah. So the top one is what?
Is LC Allen, because that was the one requested, and we felt that it was important to include. The other option that was that was um proposed in the top two.
But we don't have kind of that scenario listed out with the movements of.
They are just swappable pretty much. Uh, there are maps already prepared for both scenarios and we can go into detail. But you can pretty much, and you can see like secondary, right? You can do the same process, but just swap out LC and Montgomery and everything else should um. Go into place, but there may be a little bit more details to.
So if we're in a closed Montgomery scenario, where would the CCLA and Strath space into?
That would not be there, then that.
That we we go back to what we have in the three one one, where they likely will take over two or three middle schools that we closed, so. Um, either they combine.
Yeah, I ju- I just added that right there, so this, yeah, so if I, so I think it would be. If I should be.
Highlighting yellow.
Yeah, exactly. Um, any changes on here and when, right, the LC closure is. A right, and the Montgomery president was.
Yeah, I just put the initials of the school on there. I took away the.
Okay, and then this would be. Or. SR and S, which. H H C and S.
What's the benefit of leaving the seventh and eighth CCLA so back? Versus just having TK through eight campuses at Comstock and San.
Sorry, I put that in the wrong spot, that's the making of that, right?
So actually, it was on the CCLA parent meeting last night, but I had a lot of conversation on this option on on that, it's a part of. Why I asked earlier about whether or not we need to have a vision for where the charters are going versus having more details figured out. Um, the, the, my understanding is the history for SR. Back and then our current scenario with arts charter is that the seven, the TK eight dollar. Doesn't support comprehensive middle school without us getting to about three hundred students. And so there's a big discussion amongst the the parents last night on this parent meeting and I think overall about. The advantages of a TK eight model um without comprehensive middle school services. Or versus a uh TK six model where the seventh and eighth years are able to go to a place where they have the comprehensive little experience. And from what I'm gathering from today's conversation ways, part of what we can be saying is. For phasing is that we're, we're saying we have to do work in year one to figure out what's best to do. We want to make sure that there's space available in the vision for those potential movements. But we wouldn't actually necessarily move kids in year one. But that could result in students at CCLA and seventh and eighth grade not having a comprehensive middle school experience in year one. If we move the non-language students uh out, started moving them out of the program. And so there's a, it feels like there's a lot more to happen in that conversation. Like doesn't have to happen by Wednesday, as long as we're making sure our vision is a vision where they're contemplated.
Yes.
And similarly, I got a lot of very positive feedback on the cons- on the concepts of opportunities for. Whether it's a seven, eight or nine, um, twelve, having an opportunity to be engaged in. Having an opportunity to be engaged in triling of conversation and to be able to, sorry, curriculum. And to be able to engage in the concepts around with international back for that program. Because a lot of the beliefs around multilingual is also a more global perspective. Um, but to summarize all that, it was a very long series of current meetings yesterday. It felt like there's so much to talk about there that if we try to solve that by Wednesday, we could spend the entire time on it. And as long as we know there's any physical space, we could let those principals collaborate. We let Daisy and the team and we have a few more months.
Collaborate on that, yeah.
Yeah, I gather that, so, but we have more, we don't have to solve that.
Yes.
Can I suggest we take a like eight minute break?
Yes.
Um, and then come back, cause I feel like we're gonna dive into three, three, one and keep three, one, one on the table. And getting the very specific conversation around the schools and might be good to have a break before we.
We're good. Is the outside on?
Yes.
Alright. So I believe we wanted to talk about the three, three, one. Or the three, three, one and the three, one, one in relation to each other. Um, should we have the hard conversation about which high school? I know no one wants to talk about it, but. Jump in.
So. Leading into the, not to be let dump in and, I think, one of the things I've also heard a lot of is, I mean. A um, least, a least impact within the scenario that actually solves the word, the problems facing. And in the three, three, one. Um, and the options. We phase the more dramatic changes in over two years. So at elementary, you know, the closures, um, for Biella. Uh, Brook Hill happened in year one. Wow, that gives time to adjust the steel lane boundary. But have the closure of Steel Lane in year two in order to. Provide some families with the opportunity to transition immediately. But stay at the school uh, for an additional year if they wish to. And more time for the district to come up with a plan for capacity improvements at the elementaries. So there's no need to move modulators uh, or do significant capacity changes by August at the entry level. And then also creates a uh, second year opportunity for the Lewis Early Learning Program. To move in two phases, so leave from Lewis to um, Biella in year one. And then with the parts of it that are on Steel Lane would move in year two. And so from a logistical standpoint, I like the, the, the impacts are done in a way where they. From complexity and achievability management within the cell, the labs. It really um, gives more of an opportunity to, to do it right. Um, and then additionally, like the, the special education classes can be the focus in year one from over Biella. Uh, at the elementary level. Um, should I go through the whole rate levels in my thinking or should I stop at elementary?
Whatever you want.
Uh, um, I, I like the three, one, one also because it embraces the seven, twelve. I've seen a lot of information and studies on differences between seven, eight, six, seven, eight, seven, twelve. A, and there's a lot of trade offs between K and seven, twelve on what benefits exist in each of them. Um, but through most of the, those research studies that I was able to, to review. It shows seventy as having the most challenges. Um, recognizing that change is hard, it's something that's what we know as a community. But some of those studies, uh, you know, were across tens of thousands of students and hundreds of schools. Were showing the, the benefits of more than two years on one campus. And I think a lot of that's attached to your continuity of education or uh, continuity of the broader culture and having more investment. So I like introducing that model in the Santa Rosa, but this scenario wouldn't do it all at once. And we wouldn't do it everywhere, you know, enable us to focus on doing it right at the two locations in year one. Which I think becomes a part of the compromise there is it gets us to budget cuts. That we need to do things well and reinvest in our programs. But it enables us to do it not everywhere all at the same time. So two, two schools in year one, a third school in year two. And it doesn't necessitate uh, a fourth school being transitioned in year three for budgetary reasons. And we could then evaluate it more based on programmatic success. Um, and so it gives us, still not as long of a timeline as I'd like for such a change. But more of a timeline than like the four, four, zero or even the three, four, zero uh, looks like. The high school closure, essentially what going to the seven, twelve does. Is instead of looking at it as preventing us from closing high school. The, it, it leads to us not having to do a super elementary and us having the ability to reach our budget goals. Over a longer timeline, so we close a high school. But we use the seven, twelve model savings in order to buy time to do something right. Well, to do all of it right. Um, and we use it to uh, invest in um, keeping the elementary program looking very similar. Though obviously much more robust on the remaining campuses to where it is today and spreading the, the cuts across the full K twelve spectrum. Uh. As for which high school. There's a bunch of factors that we have to look at. One of them is student retention. One of them's capacity and one of them is how many students were moving in year one. Um, and so the three, three, one model, all the way along with the LC option. Consistently closes the lowest number of schools that were a part of the committee's recommendations. Necessitating the least number of students moving in any given year. While the Montgomery uh, closure option would result in um. More of a distribution of our high school campuses throughout the district. For folks that want to um, access a school uh, with less transportation. Uh, challenges, those are benefits for both of those models to speak to it. I'm leaning towards the LC one for several reasons. One of them is that that transportation challenge is one that was made five years ago with the closure of Cook. And the students that are moving into LC now exist at eighth grade in cohorts with friends. And community that they've built that are transferring to other schools. And are currently, those middle schools are either currently located at or further from the southwest community. Then um, than the high schools that would be remaining open. So transportation challenge that currently exists for seventh and eighth grade students would remain uh, in the. Essentially an impact that already exists that would be being now brought into the high school. Now I live in the LC district on the west side parent, um, I go to Little League with. You know, board meetings with lots of aside prayers are in terror, what I'm leading is in the LC district. And, you know, so I very much recognize those challenges. And I have to look at the fact that a lot of the parents are currently including, I mean, already moving and driving their kids. To other schools because of programming. And so fundamentally, how we have a solution that impacts, that moves the least number of students current. So using lowest, um, enrollment, lowest current enrollment across elementary, middle and high school. Within the committee's recommendations. Um, that's where my thought process is right now on it. Very open to conversation.
I'll jump in and say that I think we need to stop talking about challenges when it comes to an LC closure. And start sa- saying the word inequity. Um, because man, I'm with you, Sarah, like this is so hard, um. The disinvestments in LC have been a systematic thing and they just haven't happened. I'll say it, it's because of, because of racism. It's because of um, sometimes even kind of situations outside of our control, right? That CCLA move was so hard, uh, because we knew that this could potentially have been a consequence down the line. When we have made, when this board made that decision, we were promised by the CCLA community. That they were gonna send their kids to Elston. Against my intuition and my better judgment, I voted for not to give CCLA the home. And I honestly feel betrayed, but this is, I mean, this is not, not blaming anyone. This is a situation that again, for so many reasons have been outside of our control. But um, it's, it just hasn't, it hasn't just happened. And I have to be honest, um, cause my fuse is quite short. That the emails that we've been getting about how families won't send their kids to LC if another school are, were to close. Has filled me with so much rage. Um, because LC does have offerings and to discount those offerings is. I'm not gonna say what I actually wanna say, but it's, it's a huge, um, it's a huge disservice to the community. Um, and I, I don't, I will not support any scenario that closes LC Allen. I, I can't, I can't consider that, we, we would be leaving um, an entire community without any public education option. That is a huge inequity and I appreciate that the slides mentioned that. I mean, it's not super clear, but there are bullet points um, that say that a scenario closing LC would leave Southwest Santa Rosa with inequities. And I, and I do appreciate that, I, I think that needs to be highlighted. Um, because that's what it is, closing LC would be a huge inequity. I mean, that would be the biggest civil rights violation this board creates in decades. And not longer. Um, I think closing Cook might have been the start of that, but. Um, I, I can't support that, I really can't. And it's not just about, you know, what, what the, what, what the school offers to the community. It's, it's really a lifeline for so many, for so many families. It's a safety net for students who can't go to RUP, can't go to uh, a, a chart, they don't have, can't get into that charter option. LC is their lifeline. And honestly, I, I believe it when people tell us that if we close LC, kids will just drop out completely. They're not gonna transfer, they're not gonna find another place. The transportation issue is exacerbated. It's not that it's carrying over, it is exacerbated by the closure of Elston. So I fully, fully oppose any, any kind of conversation. That, that even considers closing LC. I mean, that's just non option, which is why I really want us, I really wanted to keep the three, four, oh, on the table. Um, I know that it doesn't get us to our financial, um, our financial goals right away. But I think it gives us time to talk about revenue, we haven't had that conversation. Um, last year, this board was talking about a potential parson tax. And we took that off the table because polling showed that it wasn't gonna pass. But I think now our community sees that this is something so critical that we really need to consider. Um, I think we're on the process of looking at our inter-district transfers or on, or, or on the path of looking at. Our charter reauth- reauthorization policies, these are all good things that are going to bring our students back. Um, and I think a three, four, oh, seven, twelve model, while not perfect right away, gives us time to have those conversations. And it ensures that this lifeline in Southwest Santa Rosa doesn't get closed. Because I, I really don't see how we move forward closing any other high school either. I mean, I, I'm not advocating for close, not closing LC and closing another, another high school. I'm not advocating for that whatsoever. But I think, I think we really need to, we need to keep on the table a scenario that does not close any high schools, especially not else.
I, I also have really serious concerns about closing LC. Um, I'm not saying I'm decided either way, it's a discussion, but. At trustee Caston, the way you're thinking about the transportation issue, I, I don't think. Just because there are students that are already being transported out of the area, doesn't mean that those eight hundred students who are still there have that ability. And. We do need to think about equity. Um. Part of that is. It is right sizing our budget, but we can't do that at the expense of a marginalized community. LC Allen is a good school, everything I've seen there, it is a good school and there's just. This, just bizarre, which is against it in our community and I. I'm concerned about the harm to that community if we close it. I'm also concerned about losing opportunities for growth there. Um. I think it could be grown, seven, twelve, I think it could be grown. If we cap, recapture students from charter schools in that area, other districts charter schools. Um, and that recapturing students, growing the enrollment there. That's more money than our, that's, that's revenue. Um, so I am. I'm really concerned about the idea of closing LC Allen. But that said, there are concerns with Montgomery, with um, the money we've spent building that campus with the ID program.
There are no words I can use, say, make up. To make any of this easier, to make any of this less painful. Um. The fact of the matter is, is. Our community continues to choose not to send their students to LC, and it is not, that's all it's fault. It's not the teacher's fault, it's not the program's fault. There, again, I will say, as everyone else, there are some amazing opportunities, you know. It is the lowest in all high school. That's not just because Cook was removed, we don't want Cook Middle School was there as a feeder high school. We had issues feeling enrollment at Elston High School. The community is not sending their students there. I would love to find opportunities to grow, but that is a big what if? What if we go through all this work and keep LC Allen open? And we have the same situation that we had when we closed Cook. When CCL, family said they would send their seal sale sale and they didn't. But went with all our eggs in the basket of keeping LC Allen open. And we do run the risk of families choosing not to send our students there. When families and community members have already shared this with us and it is horrific. And it is not okay. But teachers, staff, community members, students, incoming families have often communications that. They will not send their child to LCI. And we have made investments, we have made. And tried to bring opportunities for growth there. There's a, for whatever reason, it's not this district's fault that we do not have students in. That being said. That being said. The other school that's been in heavier consideration is Montgomery. We cannot save a campus just because we finally spent some bond with them. That's not a, a reason to solely save that campus, that bond money was invested, that it remains an asset. Regardless of where that money spent, that is. An asset that this district would own and could figure out how to create revenue, whether it's different schools on that campus. Or selling it or leasing it, like we cannot solely say we have to save Montgomery because. We just finally broke ground and are building the building. There's a two hundred student difference between LC and Montgomery. So in all reality, it's not that big of a margin as far as students that we need to find new homes for if we. Were close to Montgomery. The reality of what we're dealing with trying to right size this budget. And district is we do not get to the savings we need to get by keeping all five high schools open. We've not seen a plan yet that shows us how to do that. Countless entire hours have gone into. Trying to figure this out, and we have not yet seen a plan on how we can hit our projected savings required. For local control and accountability group without closing a baseball. I'm not the subject, I don't want to make this decision as soon as the meeting opens anymore. Let everybody feel better because it's a very painful decision. We are still going through communication and crunching numbers and trying to figure out a way. But that's the reality of both campuses, it, there's pros and cons for both. And unfortunately, the community has told us for decades that they will not send their children to Elston. And we don't have a really high enrollment compared to other campuses at Montgomery as well. That's what we're looking at with these decisions. Uh where are we going to have the opportunity for the most growth and empowerment and that's actually feasible? We thought CCLA was gonna be on Cook's campus and was gonna be a great leader program, a dual immersion, and that would grow LC Allen, and it didn't. It's hard to still have this conversation. I don't want to keep LC Allen open and have to pose it in two years. I don't wanna keep Montgomery open and have to pose it in two years because. We missed our marks and our community chose to send our students elsewhere, which. The biggest issue.
So we have been running some information related to busing and the difference in busing between. If LC were closed is a difference of about four hundred and eighty additional students. Um the swing that need transportation. Um to give, you know, to a different school site. So it's four, it's next four hundred and eighty students more. As far as us needing to provide busing because of our walking distances to miles or more. Um at the high school level, and so that is a net of about probably thirty thousand dollars. And the busing costs that would align with the closure of Elston, so we just need to make sure that. Talking about that and we're busy, the impact to the community is substantial. We talk about the number of students that we can best complete, if we, if we transition.
And I really put those numbers a lot closer for the A and B situation as part of savings, if. You close LC, you save money, but then you're spending another half a million dollars in transportation costs to try and help those students get to there. So that, that's really what we've gotta be looking at is these numbers.
And just that enrollment for brand enrollment for LC and Monty, please.
And the capacities.
Uh so in year three, it has a possibility of reopening LC, would that be the same with Montgomery?
That could be the same with any, depending on what happens with any site. Um whether it gets basically plus and something happens with it, if another school is moved up onto the campus, then obviously would change. But you know, what we have in the village is. Um Montgomery is in the elementary district, so there's more flexibility on the use of that campus. Versus LC is located where there's growth in actually. Projected growth in student population. So there's, there are multiple factors to consider on both sides, um just as an aside that. With some changes in um the intra-process when we did. You know, set the cap, we actually saw, but I don't know if this is related to that or if it's just anecdotal. But we did actually see an increase in initial enrollment at LC this year compared to projections. And others, other sites were actually less than what was projected, again, that could just. You know, be evidence, it's just information for, for your discussion.
So for the enrollment numbers, these are, every week was off last Friday. Um LC has a thousand and four students. Nine hundred and twenty-one residents, so live within the attendance boundary. Seventy-six are in district transfers and seven are out of district transfers. Uh Montgomery is one thousand two hundred and thirty-one students. Um nine hundred and twenty-one residents, so exactly the same number as Elston. Two hundred and eighty-nine in residence.
Sorry, she just repeated what she just said.
Um nine hundred and twenty-one residents, which is exactly the same number as Elston, so kind of like their catch and area is same, same size. In district transfer, two hundred and eighty-nine. And twenty-one out of the district.
Do you have the numbers of leaving the district, leaving their school site?
So.
Your requests.
Yeah, so um if we're looking at. Um and I only have just this last year pulled up on my screen right now. So um at LC Allen, there was a hundred and seventy-three requests. To transfer away in, in house, so intra-district. And six requests to go to LC Allen, so they had a net loss of a hundred and sixty-seven. Um requests this year. Uh Montgomery had one hundred and thirty-five requests to leave Montgomery. And thirty requests to attend Montgomery, so they had a net loss of one hundred and five requests. And so, and those two are not the only high schools that had a net loss. Uh Piner also had a net loss with more people asking to transfer away from Piner than to go to Piner. And um that, that has been something that we have seen over the last few years. That it is not only um LC Allen. That has more students requesting to move away from the school than requesting to go to the school.
What are the capacities of Montgomery and Elston? And if, if we're getting new data, that's not the data that's been included in all the reports today, can we specify that versus if we're repeating. The data, please, I think. We're, we're gonna start tying up different data points, it's gonna get real hard on me and everyone else.
So going off the data that was shared with this group, facilitation advisory, I criteria one lists those. So I'm gonna just read them off the score sheet. So for Elston, the overall capacity is one thousand six hundred and ninety-five. With a, and that is all permanent, meaning there are no portables. Uh it's all like natural structures or modular units there. Uh Montgomery um. As reported here is two thousand twenty-eight. But only one thousand four hundred and four are permanent. This is not count the building that's been, you know, being constructed right now, this is just. As of last year, or available right now, does the building increase the capacity or is it replacing? Previous non-permanent. Same capacity, yeah, it's seventeen total classrooms, so we removed eight to get seventeen plus nine.
So what, will it pass even?
You should, uh, I mean, given twenty-nine, about twenty-seven students per classroom at seventeen. It's gonna add the four hundred and fifty-nine. Um students.
So you do twenty-seven times nine, that's the, that difference, right?
Yeah, but we already got rid of plus. Two thousand, sort of, close to two thousand.
No, 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 I just said that because we had, so the part fourteen hundred was permanent, so we would add to the.
So around, yeah, so same amount, but.
Eighteen.
Eighteen something, but the current non-permanent capacity is still there, the, the bung world.
Yeah, we removed eight of those. So, which is different than what it says in, or that's.
It was trying to get the capacity go permanent and temporary. Decade-long lasting temporary after the building is constructed, what is that?
It's a lot, eighteen sixty-three permanent, plus however many portable suits, which. Twenty-two, twenty-two, yeah, so.
We have their max capacity with portable, that nineteen seventy-one. Plus the new building, so it's like twenty-four hundred.
Twenty-four fifty-seven.
In, in the long term, the plan is to remove all portables.
Yes.
And because those are getting to the, to the end of their life, their, their past, their expected lives. Um and we're, you know, that, that was again, the reason for constructing, for constructing that building is to replace quarters and. They're just, I just don't want us to lose sight of that. Short term, it's helped that, that, these transitions, but again, that was also why we kept that demographic study down. Was so that we could look at our sites as far as what the capacity should be in that twenty ninety-three year.
While we're talking about um enrollment, is there? What we have as far as attendance numbers, like. Number kids are showing up every day, is that included in the enrollment, is that very?
So we have to have space based on the enrollment, not on the ADA.
Right, but as we're looking at these two campuses, um what are the attendance numbers?
We can. Thirty percent. It's slow, it's here, um so uh LC Allen's average. ADA at this time, because it does fluctuate quite a bit, is ADA point six. And Montgomery's uh average attendance for this year, again, ninety-two point five. That does fluctuate by the.
So I think the thing that's hurting the most and really blocking any. Forward progression on these very difficult decisions is us not being able to envision. What's on the other side, um what could be light ahead, um. With all due respect to the marginalized community in Southwest Santa Rosa. That continually gets shortened in the state from everybody in the area. Are there opportunities for that campus to be something better for the community? If it's not simply just a high school, is that an opportunity for a smaller alternative program? For them to remain on the career path, or to be a newcomer landing site, or to continue operating. The health unit that is so vital to the community, is there are any opportunities of what could be done with that campus? Instead, like, if we close camps completely, we're projecting a forty percent net savings from closing that camp. If it were to be operating at a smaller capacity. Can we still realize some significant cost savings if we're not operating in a full high school capacity? If there are other opportunities to maybe bring in revenue and providing opportunities for students to still go to that school in some capacity, is. Is that an option in any way, shape or form? Because that's my biggest thing right now, all we're talking about is what we're taking away. And if I can't have some idea, if our community can't have some idea of what's waiting on the other side when that door gets open. One door closes, we really are hopeful another door opens. But if we're telling us that we're just closing all the doors and locking them away. It's really hard to see beyond this.
The majority of savings when you're, look, so the operational costs at any district, I mean, at any site. Are not as large, uh the, uh, as large percentage of the savings necessarily, it's really the. Savings that you're projecting is from. You do patient services if you were to move that campus to another site, so with administration. You know, office, you know, some of the teachings have it, there's very little that gets realized in savings. And you're dividing campuses as far as the teachings, you know, direct services to students, staff as far as counseling, teachers and things like that. So it, it depends on what that operation looks like if we are then. They're going to operate in one campus. For a smaller number of students, that first student cost increases substantially, so, so it's just. It, it, it's all looking at, it, it depends on what that looks like, whether it's outside or some of this.
Cause I know our biggest hit is personnel, as a district, that's our highest cost that you're spending, if not personnel, and if we're not. We don't need all the, all the teachers and staff for our whole high school experience. But we can provide a smaller high school experience in some sense and provide community resources that are much cheaper in an area that nobody else is providing. And right now, we are providing some very essential resources through that campus.
Well, in this scenario.
We're not just providing, but any partners providing as well from that campus.
On this scenario, we do have in the year two. Um Ridgeway High School moved to another location to grow that program, which uh could be. I can't even remember if this scenario uses Comstock or not, um but it comes, we had thought about. Oh yeah, Comstock was, it's been used in this scenario, so it is possible that the Ridgeway High School Alternative Program. Moves to CCLA, we haven't given it a location, but that is definitely a possibility within this scenario.
Can you jump on that, cause it goes back to what we were just saying, our charters and treating this as visionary to make sure they have space. Could not actually make decisions on where they're going, I think that's across. All of our special programs and opportunities, the campuses that would close. And not be repurposed in year one, become opportunity sites for conversations about year two and three. So all the charters become possible locations, our alternative programs, our continuation program. Become opportunities near two and three, and a lot of my vision, I trust with the. Director Valatory is making sure we have a vision, we can come out with something stronger. And making sure that we actually have the financial wherewithal to do it, which is why the three, three, one is a scenario. For me, it gets the phasing, but it also gets us the savings to where we can talk about growing something, giving something new. I have suggested many of these, many ideas around that, and I've been consistently told. Um strategic planning session uh to a lot of those, and so I wanted to be cautious about. Um envisioning one specific site today because of all the. Vision, future ideas um. That I also want to introduce, turn this into an eight-hour session, other than recognizing that year two. Year two is something that needs to be us talking more, and that's a part of the advantage of having the phasing is we can be more deliberate. Um and I briefly wanna, I, I don't wanna send the message that. LC's numbers are somehow a result of CCLA families not living up to their uh commitments. So CCLA families have transferred into the dual immersion program at, at LC Allen. Uh there is a rich band program between the schools that supported that. Um and LC Allen is a neighborhood districted school and CCLA is a charter where. Families from all over the county go, and so. Having it act like a feeder isn't practical from a just transportation drive. Time perspective, Cook is better located next, or sorry, CCLA campus is better located next to Highway twelve. There's a lot of other considerations for the families that are coming in from Windsor and from Sonoma and. Luma, you know, and so suggesting those families aren't making choices that are in the best interest of their children. Aren't making choices that are in the best interest of their children, the boundaries just aren't there to confirm that. And I don't want to put it all on the closure for this pattern because one of the big things, and I was on the planning commission when this happened to the city of Santa Rosa. LC Allen was open in the nineties at a time when there was significant development planned and intended for southwest Santa Rosa. Uh, in mid-two thousands, the tiger salamander habitat issue, uh, it, it was a big deal. Um, the mayor at the time, uh, ended up doing the lobbying trip, was on the commission, and we had to rework. Many of our development plans because the developments that were intended for the airport. Uh, field, which were thousands of units, um, in all those areas, were no longer able to move forward as of. As essentially other tiger salamander habitats have been identified as an endangered species, so the planned growth of southwest Santa Rosa. That we were originally was in all of those assumptions, didn't happen, and didn't happen through no fault of anyone. I mean. It was, you know, because of that process of the federal designation. So I, I think. I just want to be really cautious of thinking anyone feel like there's, they're the reason for this, because fundamentally, it was also just demographic trends. That were real in nineties, that are not real, that were not real in the next decade. And in a lot of ways, that's, that is the biggest root cause to some of the things that put us here today. I, I'd really like to see us still advance. I'd like to see the three-three-one and the S uh as contemplated, so the LC advance and the three-four-zero advance. Um, and have the maps, and have the understanding. I really, really, really worry about not having money for three-four-zero and I. Don't see a path of. How that ends up working by tomorrow, but. I don't think. Closing a high school, um. Should sit alone for our decisions tomorrow, that having both options available and fully well thought out with the detailed maps um for us to contemplate.
And also, do we want to look at some maps today?
Yes.
Then, you know, trustee has to have some adjustments to some maps, do we want to see the maps for the three-four-zero and the three-one-one?
Three.
Or three-three-one, sorry.
Interesting, yes, interesting. Um, I have one more comment about the high school scenario, and I'm gonna cry through this, it's fine. Um. I have been very clear from the beginning that I do not want to close the high school. I have worked with kids. My entire adult life. The traumas that our community has been through are absolutely insane. And being on the mental health side of things, I've seen it firsthand very clearly. Um. That being said, I have found myself in this position where I have been. Changing my mind. Daily, it seems like for the last couple of months. Not necessarily on the high school front, but on, you know, we had the fault lines and we had um the seven-to-twelve idea and all these other things that have played into it. And while I. I would love to say that we could solve this without closing the high school, and I'm glad that we're gonna talk about that more. Um, I don't see that as a possibility going forward. And I really don't want to close those, like, I, I don't, however. I don't want to sacrifice all of Bennett Valley for that. Um. I think when we look at numbers and we look at the decrease in Montgomery High School, the, the numbers that have gone down a little bit over the last year. That's directly related to that entire community begging the board to see them, to support them, to protect them. And they did not. And then we see people leaving. And I just want to make sure that that is clearly stated because. Firstly, for me, I chose to put my kids, I moved, I, this has been a big thing, like, I'm not leaving the board, I'm not quitting or anything, but. I rent and I live where I live so that my kids can walk to school. Uh, I purposely live where I live so they could walk to school to Montgomery because I, mine, we're in eighth grade at the time. Of this stabbing, and there's no way that that school should have not been the best school possible the following year. The first year was. A struggle, right, and now we're into the second year and we have caught our stride. I say we, and I don't mean to say that because I am very much for the entire community, but that's just where my, where I am, like, physically. Um. The community that has been rebuilt around that. Is absolutely amazing. You throw in the IB program that really, I know it can be moved, but the, the way to do that is no easy path. Um, but I just want to make sure that it's clear that the decline in, in numbers in the last. Couple of years is due to safety and the community begging this district for support. Uh. And I don't think that we can. Say, like, sacrifice the school to. Roll the dice on another, and I, I, I know that sounds awful and I'm sorry. That it hurts, but I just wanted to say that. Kirby.
Okay, um. Let me start with, you know, like a lot of the other trustees, I, I. I really. Was adamant. When we first started this, I was like, I really don't want to close a high school, I. Really don't want to do everything we could to try to get around that. I also then wanted to, I appreciate and respected the work that the. Closure Committee did uh in taking some of the work and burden off of us, digging into the details, digging in deep into the data. Prior to coming up with their recommendation. Um. Uh, that being said, I mean. Uh, some of that data points to a specific direction, um. But I have serious concerns. About some, a lot of the programs, particularly at LC Allen, um. I, I. I, if it ends up that way, I. I want to make sure that. For example, the university um center pro- program, um. Uh, we need to find a way to support these students, if it ends up being that way, to, to make sure they can get to Santa Rosa High School where, you know, they can. Have access to the SRJC campus more easily. I want, if the ag program closes, you know, those students need to get up to Santa Rosa High School. I want to grow the CTE program. And if we close LC, then we're talking about taking away some of those programs. I hope that they can be relocated versus shutting them down, I mean. They're really taking some great steps to try to grow those programs. I love the marching band, I. I, you know, I have such fond memories back from my high school days, and, and LC is the only one that's got a marching band program, I, I don't want to lose that. Um. But I come back to. What? How, how do you, how do we keep it open even as a pilot seven-twelve program? And attract students to that, I. That, that is just the, the struggle, I, I just don't. See that happening based on what the emails I've gotten, the public feedback, the meetings I've been to. And. To Director Manieri's point, I mean, I, I would love to have a parcel tax to. To help offset some of the, some of these uh budget crises that we find ourselves in, but. That, that's like two years down the road, I, I don't see how that can happen in a timely fashion to help. Uh, alleviate the stress that we are under right now and need to, need to fix. Um, the trend for enrollments is down at all our schools, it's particularly down at, at LC Allen, um. I do like. Uh, on the year three, on this particular slide that's up there, this, this potential for LC Allen to be used as a potential charter. You know, for, I, I don't know who moves at Roseland or who, uh, one of the charters that moves in, and perhaps we can bring them under our purview and then. Get, get that revenue that we've been losing all these years. Um, perhaps that, you know, again, to Director De La Torre's point, you know, looking down the road and trying to find some silver lining. Out of all this, um, sure, and, and to, to match with uh, uh, Dr. Morales's dream of an enrollment center and a newcomer center, maybe that's the place. For that as well. But. You know, we gotta make this tough decision and I want us, we gotta get back to the business of educating our children. And, um. Cause I, I don't feel. That we've been doing that well these last few years. Um. So anyway, I. I also, I really like this three-three-one. Scenario that we're looking at right here, uh, um. I want to make sure we keep that um as an option. I would personally. Um, take. Montgomery off the board for this particular scenario, but I don't know if we want to make it two scenarios where one is. LC Allen and one is Montgomery, I'm not sure how to address that. Um. But. Anyway, that's, that's my comment for now. Uh, I would like to see the maps, for sure.
Yeah, can you put on um maps for? Either the three-one-one um and the three-three-one? Or do we start with the three-three-one?
The three-three-one, let's always see the difference between LC versus Montgomery.
Um. We have the eleven-three-one, um, but. So. So this would be the attendance boundary without Calci Allen. Um, capacity will become a constraint, uh, because just, uh. So there are a few decisions that went into this boundary. So the first thing is that we need to uh try to figure out who absorb LC Allen, which right now is here in the south. And this is their current attendance boundary. So the proposal here uh splits the attendance boundary between San Rosa High and Montgomery, that's just because. Both are close to the freeway, if people make it to the freeway, then they can get there quickly. Um, that means that Piner and Maria Carrillo. We need to adjust their attendance boundary in, to allow Montgomery and uh San Rosa High to have increased capacity for students moving in. So, um, for Piner High School means taking over part of the, what pretty much all the Mark West School District. And becoming their uh school district of residence.
Where in the actual school zone?
Uh, Piner is down here, someone.
So they would go all the way to the top.
Yeah, right now they are going to. Uh, Maria Carrillo is somewhere in here. Uh, the difference here is that Carrillo will need to take over pretty much all, all Brinkon Valley Unified, and I think you do, um. Pretty much all in the Valley Union and part of North Santa Rosa to free up. Um, space at San Rosa High for the increase in. And um the attendance boundary for Montgomery will shrink a little bit to the north.
Can you show us where Montgomery is on that, please?
Uh, it's right here. In this corner.
Right, that tiny little corner right there.
Yeah. Um, and so because Montgomery is right there on the border between uh San Rosa City, which is on uh the left side. And uh Recon Union or to the north, um, that is um, or less how people live.
And where is Slater on that?
Uh, Slater remains on this side here.
When, in the Carrillo district.
In, while Slater is, um, while the three-three-one assumes as later closes, so. Um. The three middle schools that are slated to close are San Rosa Middle, San Rosa High, sorry, San Rosa Middle, Comstock and Slater. And the feeders will become pretty much the three uh high school open. Brinkon Valley will continue to feed and have the same attendance boundary as Maria Carrillo. Piner turns into seven-twelve by absorbing students from Comstock. Santa Rosa High turns into seven-twelve by absorbing students from San Rosa Middle. Um, and then Montgomery becomes a seven-twelve. Right, so that's, that's, that's the three-three-one scenario discussing.
I have some specific concerns around communities of interest staying together, of course, is that? But we, for process level. How should we discuss, there's little, there's certain neighborhoods that. If kept in one district and traded with other ones, you know, would, I think, help some of them not work within the community better? Uh, is now the time to discuss those details or?
Yeah, now or tomorrow night, so.
Oh, no.
Right now.
And so very, very specifically on this one, and I actually appreciate that this map keeps, uh, makes San Rosa High's highest. Boundary actually contiguous, um, and I think that is a little bit. Different than having that weird, a little up in Coffee Park, so I like, I think that improves the, the continuity of the San Rosa High one, very specifically in a. We're in a very fancy way with Blue Sharpy, identify these two neighborhoods, there's the neighborhood immediately adjacent to Montgomery High. Uh, starting kind of the Montgomery Drive area, heading up to Yalupa, that's all what I would call walkable. Um, and I think it's incredibly important that that would be a part of the Montgomery uh border.
For that, that's here, there's the.
No, yeah, this is, Yalupa is, is.
It's right there, yeah, so, everything west of Yalupa. Uh, kind of south of Montgomery, I think is all very walkable. And I think that that needs to stay with the Montgomery uh border to maintain that ability. Um, so this is well, so that, oh yeah, we are, we are.
And then, and I'm going to spread it off there.
And then specifically, if we need to move other. Um. Yeah, we need to move other. Uh. I don't know where the balance of that here.
Does that balance stay? We do have space in Montgomery just because, but also remember there is the middle schoolers, right, and so here.
Uh, yeah, alright, so. If we needed more space, there are communities kind of in a further east area uh that are. Gonna have to drive either way, it's still a really long drive, but I just feel like. So, meaning the walkability is important.
So I can put the current Montgomery boundary, right, is basically Highway twelve. And then it crosses down on the creek and then follows the creeks. So we could go and, and follow that if. Uh, pretty much keeping the same from.
Can we see that?
Can you see that Summerfield? Sorry, um, so this, this actually incorporates. The Anadale, Spring Lake Park, and the neighborhoods by um, the Summerfield and Montgomery, which are currently Montgomery.
Like, or Montgomery, so you would like to keep the same, pretty much following along with the path, you're right?
Yeah.
Um, here, I.
There's not a lot of residential stuff here in the area, but it's just, just stay with the creek.
This is where the. You know, census boundaries don't really follow.
Right there, what, what percentage is that, there is a set of.
Um, we are, we are still okay, um.
And just to remind us that capacity percentage is not based on the new building opening in October.
Right, that's correct, this one is exactly what we shared with the school.
Yes, this does not include.
This also is not counting the middle school students, but um, or potential capacity we put that.
Yeah. And. Sorry, that was my biggest concern I saw, so that I took that, addresses.
And that one, I can, so basically you would like to keep the same boundary within the Recon Unified.
Yes.
Just. Right? Keep the same boundary.
Yeah. And my. The only other, I, I. The only other, I guess, uh, you know, sorry, my other issues on the elementary, I think.
Just a second, um kind of when Nick was saying, and this is. It will apply to the elementaries too, and it kind of goes back to the idea of that super elementary thing. As a parent. Being able to walk to your school when your house is where it is so that your kids can walk to school. Is extremely important for all sorts of reasons. So just wanting to keep that in mind. I appreciate the the adjustment there. Uh I I would assume there would be like a mild bubble around. And in high school, I know it's not necessarily feasible, but um. For that walkability thing, something to keep in mind is teenagers aren't all getting their license at sixteen anymore. They can't carpool with their friends. And so it it that driving thing is not as um helpful. I guess, um as it once was, just to keep that in mind. Thank you.
And historically, these these boundaries have had to change before. There was a a point in time thirty years ago where we were at three high school district. And everybody in East Santa Rosa went to Santa Rosa High. For Montgomery and everybody in West Santa Rosa went to Piner or Santa Rosa for Montgomery. So I mean, we. These, we're trying to keep this as large as possible to capacity wise. But this isn't the first time this district has gone through moving boundaries and we we tried to build campuses where. We felt students needed those campuses um throughout the quadrant of the city.
If there are no other notes on these boundaries, can we look at what it would look like to Montgomery? Can you just before, oh no. Can you just hover over where the. Where the high schools actually are on there? I know you did, but big picture.
This is Montgomery's here.
Okay.
In this corner.
And that's gonna be.
Santa Rosa High is, and this is right here. Piner is right here.
Okay.
And then Maria Carrillo is. This one.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
And you saved the one that you highlighted, right?
I wanted to redo it because I removed Maria Carrillo. I always do that. I brought a note, I remember.
Okay, got it.
Sorry, I. I always do that and I need to wait, like. I went down this touch over so much. Okay, so this would be the map without Montgomery and with Elsie Allen. The the requirements are kind of like the same now instead of splitting up. Elsie Allen, we are splitting up the Montgomery attendance boundary, which is um here. So it gets split between Elsie Allen taking over the south side. Santa Rosa High taking over our own elementary school district. And Maria Carrillo picking up the rest. In order for Maria Carrillo to have space to do this. Again, there is that trade off between the um, you know, the attendance boundary. Up north of the Mark Mark West uh school district. So again, here, uh it pretty much follows the attendance boundaries where Recon Union. Goes to Maria Carrillo alongside, um I don't know how this is called as. But it's like part of Bennett Valley and this one follows the. Creek again, um so anybody south of the creek goes to Elsie Allen and everybody above the creek goes to Maria Carrillo.
Can you find each, I don't know if you have the capabilities of doing it, but can you show where Strawberry and um Yalupa are on that map?
I'm sorry, I don't know their.
I think they're, um, so with the Bennett Valley School District with the two schools.
So I think it's right here and currently is uh in this map. I and we can, you know, like as as we said, we can move boundaries around. So this is where Yalupa is. I don't know where Strawberry is.
So Strawberry would be like four mile off Bethards.
So on this side, yeah.
It's between Bethards and Yalupa.
Would you go up?
Yes.
For you is, yes, that's for you.
So this is strawberry then. So basically, I I I think the way it's it's working, strawberry will go to Carrillo. And Yalupa will go through Elsie Allen in this map.
I think we'll need to adjust that a little bit to uh to keep that elementary pocket together.
Yeah, I I mean.
Cause one of one of the schools is K three and the other one is four, six, and so. It's just a really tricky um line. I feel like they would either need to all go yellow or all go green.
That actually wouldn't change anything because the kids would be coming through together regardless. It really has to do. Where they're living in those, so you don't want it's gonna be, it's gonna be split probably regardless of of where that line goes. As far as the schools, so if it's specific neighborhoods, I think that's a very different one, specific schools.
It's our entire school community. It's just two schools and so it it makes sense that those. Kids in that cohort would be going the same direction once they get out of elementary school.
Wouldn't we not know that one through six would go to Strawberry and then. Whoever struggles. We would have to know where they live to relieve my heart is without that data, it doesn't make sense.
And also it was probably several years during our conversation. Be necessary. Um I, it was a macro concern with this, so. Using the Portrait of Sonoma County's data, um which got me in twenty twenty one, they have an interactive map. And it looks at um. The American Community Development Index and one of the scales is related to education access and and. It's a misnomer in in this conversation when we're talking about. Access education as a southwest Santa Rosa concern, the portrait pretty clearly shows especially. More of a southern, I'd say, um. Southern Santa Rosa concern, but it even stretches out into the central parts of Santa Rosa and more central. And what this map appears to do is map the LC boundary to concentrate the. As you, the education index disparity levels all within the LC boundary, which. It 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 concerns me on a macro level um that that we'd be taking. Those census tracts are currently kind of split between LC and Montgomery and concentrating them all into one uh school boundary. I don't inherently have a suggestion on how we change that, but that's one of the concerns I have with this pattern.
Crazy trade, I mean, what we could do is remove, you know, the Carrillo boundary down, right? Pretty much having Carrillo take over. West side or east side, right? Basically taking over up and down this way. And we leave space for Elsie Allen to push up into this neighborhood, but again, I don't know if that is going to. Like make a difference in any sort of in this, right?
I think it just comes forward tomorrow. Uh I wanna see a map option that. Clearly split up the lower index census tracts and doesn't concentrate them all in one um district. So I didn't forward the map to make everyone's looking at the same one, yeah, but you know, if this was to come forward. I need to see that change because I wouldn't. I wouldn't want to move forward with an option that concentrates that disparity given.
Now, the only option right here is either to uh Santa Rosa, right? Push into the south a little bit, right? And maybe trade the sum of this attendance with the north side, either between Piner and Maria Carrillo. I don't know if that is more palpable or preferable than something like this, right?
I'm concerned about that Piner. I don't know that people are gonna drive that part of Piner. Is there any way back to the town Maria Carrillo and shift things around?
Really up here, this is all mountains, right? This is just where Marcus is as a district. It goes up this way and they cut. But it's all like woods.
Do we have anybody living up there? Literally no one lives there?
We have like handful of students.
Well, if it's just a handful, could that be for you?
You know, like, we went back and forth. The real question is where do we wanna throw the boundary, right? And uh this one uses the district boundary, uh but we can also like start thinking about um. We had maps that have the Mark West Spring Road as the boundary, so if you live, you know, if you live east. Of Mark Mark West Spring, you go to Carrillo, and if you live on the west side, have you go to Piner? Uh we could push it down more, but then we'll need to decide like, you know, do we use the creek? We wanna use some other marker because otherwise it's just us picking something, right? And so.
So, pardon me, back to my college days and some of the houses up there from theater gatherings. That heading up east on River Road in that area. Yeah, cutting across all of the buildings is dropped down into Rio is not actually. Easier than getting to one-on-one and heading south, so getting to Piner or getting to Santa Rosa High, I mean, I hear you, I hear you, but. Getting to Piner or getting to Santa Rosa High would, I think, be as much in consideration as getting to Rio.
And that's how we go. I I think like in the nineties with.
Right.
Right, because of of this conversation or saying it's easier for them to just drive from just three blocks and there was a high than going to Piner, so. We can go back to the year between the bubble.
For these maps, do we have current attendance numbers? Like, do we have thirty students in that bubble? Do we have three students? Do we have no students? Cause that might help, cause unfortunately the. The leveling out of the birth rates and the generational generations, people staying in their homes longer after people, kids have stolen a nest. You know, we we base a lot of this where students are gonna go based on houses and it's just really not the same. So trying to understand where students are.
So we are talking about this area like it's running with Ronin, but it's about sixty-five students.
Oh, sixty-five, sixty-five, that's.
And this is against. Well, we'll go to Maria Carrillo and what we saw to Mark West, so.
And right now, if we don't change anything at all, those sixty-five go to the Rio district?
No, this is based on residents, right? Uh this does not keep seeing into consideration um for the options though. Okay, so they could be on the transfer to Santa Rosa High or something similar.
If we put those back in a Santa Rosa High, would that make some room for the Elsie Allen district to take some of this in? Was a high. Counter what? What's he casting is saying about their concentration?
Just forwarded that map over. We may need to see it with an overlay um in order to truly address it. But the the concentration in the Portrait of Sonoma map is basically. A whole, it looks like a balloon out on the southern part, so there's those southern and southeast and southern and southwest. If you go up in the top, the second. You need to change the layer, so I'm sorry, you know, it's okay. Right, yeah, that one, and then good education. So, right. And then one-on-one is somewhat our maps if you scroll in, they'll show you it, but you know, so close you can't see the big picture, but basically one-on-one is. In this center there, and so you have that southeast, you have it in southwest and it kind of goes out to the central corridor. And so that's the. That was the concern is, that's why I wanna make sure that we don't. Proposing a map that concentrated the light blue versus the.
Right, given the location is that so Elsie Allen is right here, I I know there were some comments about walkability to school. Right? And kind of like having a bubble, so kind of like, you know, think about parade use will be somewhere on here, that's walkable. Now we couldn't trade this side. Of in my precious Vista One Strands and Taylor Mountain neighborhoods. Up to maybe Santa Rosa High and have them like along the attendance boundary, right? I, you know, like given the location of the schools. It's, I mean, it's hard, you know, that's. Yeah.
Hey, yeah, ju- just back a couple of concerns. So back to the original map, if you can throw it up for this scenario, I do have the ability.
In the one with Elsie Allen closing?
Yes, yeah, there you go. So, and sorry, can you scroll it? Yeah, right there to the statistics. Scroll down a little bit so I can see all of them, so.
Elsie Allen closing or Monte closing?
Uh, sorry, this one, well, uh this is, uh, wait, this is, uh.
This is the one without Elsie Allen.
Uh, the the other one, sorry. The keeping else closing month. The one we were just on a second ago. So, yeah, so I'm looking over the statistics. I mean, are we really talking about ninety-nine point five? Percent capacity at LC and at Piner with this scenario? I mean, I'm. A little concerned about that. It's like maximum.
Sorry, this is only for high schooler. Um these scenarios that also move middle schools on this will put pressure on the facilities regardless. So yes, the numbers look like that for pretty much any scenario that closes a high school. Would put us close to ninety-five percent use of our current high school facilities. And just to house high school students. Um I know there is an additional. Uh step in the three, three, one to also close three middle schools, but we have a plan for that.
Right, um and this may have been answered, previous, I can't even remember now, but. So what happens to students when we change the boundaries and let's just say someone. Has gone to Santa Rosa High for eleventh grade and now all of a sudden. They've been moved into the Montgomery bu- uh boundary for their senior year. Are we giving them? Priority to continue at the high school they were at, or can someone talk to that? Like, wh- what are we doing with those?
Our, when we are showing the current enrollment numbers. Those current enrollment numbers are actually including people who are enrolled there regardless of their school of residence. So if you have a junior who is currently attending Elsie Allen on an intra-district transfer. They are considered an Elsie Allen student regardless of their home residence. And our first priority would be to not disrupt the students who are already currently enrolled. So um while I can't today give you assurances that. None of these decisions will impact anybody at the school who's are currently rolling, taking hold there. That is our highest priority. Is that if they are there, that they would be, you know, that that would be our first step is to protect their enrollment where they go.
And that goes for every grade, like not just juniors.
Correct, yeah, because if a student is already enrolled there, we currently operate under the model that. Families are required to reapply for transfer at the theater jump. Unless their program or their school hits a an internal capacity. So there may be a situation where um a child who is in a specialty program is informed that. Um I'm sorry, that program no longer has capacity. Or a child who is at a school, uh for example. Uh in a child applies to attend a particular school because of a specialty program. Um Art Quest, uh Early College Magnet, these kinds of programs, and the student leaves that program. That does not, in our current practice, protect them staying there. So if I apply to a school in order to be in a specialty program and then decide. Either the program's not right for me or I'm not being successful enough to branch. I don't get grandfathered in. I then return to my home school, but other than those kinds of complications. Um that is our first objective is to maintain where children are enrolled. To the extent that we have the capacity to do so.
So a little bit back to the point I brought up earlier, just I just want clarifications. So example, if someone's an FFA at. Elsie Allen and. So example, if someone's an F F A at L C Allen and wants to transfer to Santa Ro-. Santa Rosa. Is that listed as one of the? Criteria for them to be able to make that happen?
Um, specifically, when we look at the prioritization that is currently written into our administrative regulations. There are four specialty programs that are called out in our current um A Rs. Those are Art Quest, Early College Magnet, International Baccalaureate, and the University Program. However. We haven't been in a situation like this, and we do have the capacity even within the way that the current of A Rs are ready. To say specialty programs and to redefine which specialty programs. So if it is um the determination that we are going to add additional programs to that prioritization list. We have the latitude and the capacity to do so.
Okay, yes, I would, I would definitely want that addressed, so thank you for clarifying.
Yes.
And in our prior conversation around our intent, that's exactly what we were talking about. So we we've expressed the intent that we want F F A to be able to transfer now.
So we have. Over half an hour left, um. I want to make sure we're there on which scenario or worse scenarios. I want maps. I'm hearing a lot of interest in the three three one, but. We'll go around and see if that's accurate interpretation.
Yes, I would like to see the three three one.
Yes, yeah. I would like to see the three four.
Yes, me as well.
Which one?
I'm sorry, I may have missed that. Oh, there are two different three three ones?
No, um, you're saying you want to see the three three one tomorrow?
Correct, yes.
Trustee Dylan Torey.
I'd like to see the three three one and the uh. I'd really like to know with the three three one. If there is an option mapped out to have L C Allen be the primary for seven twelve. And not fully shut it down. If we can be simple type of, I just want to know if there's a number attached to that.
So can I get certification? So are you asking? Three, three, one, and have it a different school? Or are you actually asking the three, uh, a version of the three four zero?
A version of three four zero.
Okay, thanks.
That's where the the pilots of the seven twelve, so I would like the three four zero for comparison to talk about. And if that, if in that comparison, we could see what the funding model would look like. What happened in L C B to break the seven twelve pattern? That makes sense.
I don't think that's a part of that.
It 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 are.
That's already.
Is part of the three four zero, so.
I really equally like to see the three four zero and the three three one.
Those are the options we would like to talk about.
So can we drop to the three one one?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's three, three one and three four zero, so, okay.
Can we ask us a question? Three, three, one, would you like to see both scenario A and B or L C Allen and Montgomery or just one of them? I understand we're trying to narrow down to, is that correct?
Yeah, ideally, that would be.
Yeah.
The what would get us to a quick resolution, but without heading, you know, any discussion that you might have. That's why we're discussing today. The ide- ideally, it'd be two scenarios that you're taking for approval. We do scroll poll of. L C versus Montgomery. Is there further discussion on L C versus Montgomery?
All right, why, why, why wouldn't we do this from?
So in for the three, three, one scenario, so what they bring to us tomorrow? Do we want the three, three, one closing L C or the three, two, one closing Montgomery?
I I think we should have both. I don't think we can decide.
I I think. I mean, we either have to have that conversation now or tomorrow. Tomorrow will be a lot easier if we have that conversation now.
I feel like I've been pretty clear where I stand. Um, I did have one question, um. If we. Do we know if there's some sort of risk of uh of a lawsuit if we close L C without an equity impact analysis?
So I think these are, we have two different questions to answer with that. So, yes, if we did not do an equity impact analysis, however, linking up with demographics is the analysis. That doesn't, that's not equity. I I I under, I am sure that's the. That means from my understanding, based on what we were guided through with those services, is that it meets the requirement, although we're technically not required. Anybody can challenge any of our decisions. And yes, your point is is on target, but it disproportionately impacts. Marginal is.
So I want that to be really clear to the board that we could potentially face a lawsuit. And that could be, if that could be a huge cost to our district if we go down that route. Because that that seems like a really unclear answer, and I appreciate it, Lisa, but I just need that to be really clear.
I did check that very question with legal. And Nimita will be at our board meeting tomorrow for further clarification. But I did ask her if we were opening up ourselves to any um OCR potential complaint, whether it's L C or um Monte. And she said, you followed what the state would have you follow if you weren't physical distressed. Um, and so she didn't see us oh being open up to any liability under OCR. So I did ask legal that question for both schools.
I'd like to see us come forward with the three, three one.
Wait, I'm sorry, could you repeat that? It was it was cut out.
Trustee Jenkins and Caston both want to see the three, three, one closing L C. Trustee Delor Torre.
You need to say three, three, one model with also.
I want to see a three, three, one model with Monte closing. I feel that the enrollment numbers are not. Significant enough. The difference is not significant and the disproportionate effect on the L C community. But. Trusty Kirby.
I would uh like to see the three, three, one model with the L C closing.
What further attraction?
So if that's the case, then we would be bring back tomorrow three, three, one with L C closing in all the maps. As well as a three, four, four of all the maps.
Or zero.
Person, I'm I'm sorry, three or zero with all the maps. I'm so sorry.
And so the three, four, zero elementary map and the three, three, one elementary maps are actually slightly different and other initially constructed. Could we go through that today? So we don't. They really.
We have one map for.
And we need our elementary district to. You know. It'll be very hard to talk about it, so.
I think year one, uh, what is this? So this is the Google educators. So this is the map that is currently under the three, three, one scenario. I'm going to overlay our current attendance boundaries. Uh, then let's walk through these pools that are closing and how they get absorbed. So uh this is the attendance boundary for Brooklyn. Uh, Brooklyn get uh gets absorbed by pretty much ninety percent by Proter Terrace and some of the uh western side. Um, um. For bank, thank you. Uh, the next closure, uh, this year one. Uh, is uh Biella and Biella gets split between Ellen Lehman and James Monroe.
Why can't you stop it there? I. My eyes are not helping me today, so it's a really closing.
Yeah.
So can you say exactly what you said again?
So this is the attendance boundary for Biella. Is this corner here?
Is that tiny?
This is this tiny corner, it gets split along the West College. Um, this is um. A man, in in Ayr Drive, sorry, I don't know that, and that the creek. They are going to go to your, um, thank you, they're going to um. Ellen Lehman right here, and everybody above goes to James Monroe right here. Uh, there is some trade off here, long term trade offs of um currently in attendance boundary that goes to Lehman that would actually be assigned to James Monroe under this plan. And then um in blue, we have the new reduced attendance boundary for St. Lane. Remember, this is a two year uh plan where in year one, we shrink the attendance boundary for St. Lane down in preparation for closure. And then this boundary gets divided between uh in the valley. James Monroe. And Ellen Lehman, depending on where we can add capacity over the next year. So basically, this F, this blue area will uh go away year two, and it will be absorbed by um the other three schools that are in the border in time goes through. So the uh basic idea behind this map is to leave this south side of the attendance boundary uh stable long term. And the north side having a small change after St. Lane is closed and can be absorbed by the other three sides of that. If you want, I can load it. Um, this is how I try to split it up. It's a weird jigsaw where, you know, we have this area that goes up like this and this area that comes down. We can play around with this a little bit, but um that is one of the proposals. Um, again, pending construction and where we can actually add the capacity. So, uh, if it's easier to add to Ellen Lehman, Ellen Lehman might take over more. If it's easier to add to James Monroe, James Monroe will take over more. If it's easier to add a uh. In the valley, in the valley.
So the year two map is dynamic based off of being able to use year one.
Exactly.
To figure out the logistics of where we can add the capacity.
Exactly, so this is really used uh for like protections currently. I would assume after the S A approves our building additions, we know how many rooms we can add at each school depending on the current capacity. And what we can potentially add, uh, pending differentiating study and in the valleys, there are so many moving parts. That it's really difficult enough to say this is going to be a, uh, you know, long term.
Can we speak specifically to how the second year for the steel closure would impact the programs there for special ed for.
So uh currently it's still lane. Um, there are four um preschool special day classes there. Uh, and then we anticipate those would, I mean, travel along with uh where Lewis might, uh, right, they. Actually have them all in one area. Um, there aren't any other specialized programs at uh Steel Lake. There are some um mild, moderate S P Cs, but uh those sort of travel with the local school. They're not placements from uh our school attendance to an area. So I don't have uh expect any difficulty in that area.
In this timeline, it contemplates moving programs in year one from Hubbard Biella and year two. Clearly, the need. Basically, well, from steel. Is that phasing giving me what you need to get the proper focus on each of those?
I'm going to look at Eric here because there's some, we've been engaged in in discussions about this, particularly different things like bathroom needs. Also, bathroom rooms and et cetera.
Yeah.
The phasing helps with.
Yeah.
It's certainly that after.
Built that we need to tackle those issues.
And I, a- again, since I mentioned it before, we would like to uh decluster Lincoln as well at some point. Um, but there's more flexibility with groups of three clusters and. Yeah, exactly, so you have a great span at an at an elementary school. And and if uh students can be either at their home school or relatively close to their school of attendance, impossible.
So this was start, but momentum on being able to do the clustering. And continue it in year three and four.
Yes.
Question about the elementary, um, specifically with Biella. Love you, um. Just taking special consideration, I'm just going to cry here. Uh, special consideration for our special ed families who have been very vocal and for good reason about. I mean, it's rough to get bounced around and then find your home. As we all are facing. Um, how, what is that? What does, I mean, you probably just said this and things aren't sticking right now, but what does that look like? Or specifically the special ed families who have um have found their home at Biella and all the special ed stuff? Just say it a little bit.
Sure, I I. I think it would be necessary to have some community meetings with with the parents. It's. To analyze a little bit, we were anticipating bringing back a number of students from scope and working this here. Similar idea, uh, holding some community meetings with with parents to give them confidence as they potentially have their their precious child living to a new school. Uh, that there won't be any uh interruption in in programs and so forth. Also, um, one of the virtues of. Biella is because I think the the families like is that we have clustered. And to the extent possible, we are going to be uh moving classrooms in 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 single clusters. Will there be disruption absolutely, but I think we can, uh, again, through community meetings and then transition meetings with each one of those families. That is a formal I E P meeting. Um, and I think we'll be able to give them confidence that, well, the the move will be as smooth as possible.
So what I, what it sounds like is that, that. I I mean, it's a reoccurring theme as far as the proactivity to make sure people are.
Yeah, ab- absolutely, and my my team has been planning on moving scenarios, et cetera, already without any particular schools in mind, but looking at the. Particularly Biella. Um, and are gearing up potentially good, good landing spots. So this has been involved conversations.
For the three, four, zero. Conversation. Um, I know a big pushback is not having facilities for seven, eight athletics. Um, for the initial year of any seven, twelve combos. Um, is there any capacity? To utilize the former municipal site for athletic opportunities so that we're not having that something immediately? Or can we at least have that as part of the conversation tomorrow so we know what that might look like?
Um, yeah, we, I know that that was um. In last week, we watched some of the campuses that actually was part of the conversation that um schools would be able to, or the seventh and eighth years would be able to go back and use the former campus. So if we're looking for some logistics that would be worked out there, that is a lot of shitness.
I know, like particularly, it makes sense, it would work for a Montgomery Slater situation because Slater students are running the neighborhood right now for wrestling and cross country anyways. And, you know, they'd still be utilizing some of that neighborhood between campuses, but trying to see what it would look like to still use the former campus for athletics. So just that we can have that available for tomorrow's conversation, that'd be helpful.
I don't know if there'd be any more particulars, we'd be able to give it just yes, that that's what we would do.
Okay, thank you.
Still writing to three, four, zero, this may be a comment on all of them. But if we could remove specifically accelerated charter going to get in the valley, I think that's a really good idea, but I think it can happen under either scenario.
Yeah.
Uh, we remove uh Char School for the Arts from going to Ridgeway. I I again, I actually don't know, but I think that's a good idea. It's, I mean, there's some challenges there, but I also don't think it's pertinent to the three, four, zero model, we'll try to get addressed later. And. It may even remove the Ridgeway. It may even remove the Ridgeway height, like a lot of those things I view as being things that can happen in. Any model, and so if we could. Move some of those things out, so technology has been already talked about. So only things that we actually need to do.
Um, by the way. I have two questions, one is whether or not we want to look at the older elementary map? That does a little bit slightly different than this boundary, but maybe that's in the weeds. The second thing that we haven't discussed, but we should at least prepare for tomorrow is. A timeline for either the, you know, the four or the three. Uh, of the closure of the middle schools, uh, because they will have facility plans. And I don't know if that.
Because what?
Of facilities, uh, con- constraints, I know that on. The PowerPoint, uh, currently in three, three, one. That suggests closing, uh, Comstock and Santa Rosa Middle next year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that the projections for Santa Rosa High. If we don't displace students there on transfer. The projection is we're going to have twenty five hundred students. Uh, which is, uh. About five hundred students above their capacity, so there might be ways to make it work. Um, within the current, uh, but it might be, uh.
I think those capacity needs are part of the phasing. In multiple years to kind of limit the number of campuses we're handling to just the high school. Seven, twelve versions. And so I think that's. The theory is to eliminate elementary from having to have. Uh, capacity changes in year one, to be able to focus on exactly that, that capacity issue. In year one. With, with that phasing, I, I have a, I would have a similar conversation with the three, four, zero. How the construction, the capacities.
Yeah.
So how much of that conversation do we need to have? Before tomorrow versus recognizing that? Either scenario has been to involve a lot of those conversations over the next month, month.
Yes, the, and this like technically we are holding off ninth grade scheduling and I know this was programmed. Until we know where the ninth graders are going to go. And where the middle schoolers will go, right? And so we want to like bundle it all together. Now, the other question I had is whether or not. We want to do. The seven, twelve pilots under this scenario. And Hiner and Montgomery, which have both space. And then phasing later Santa Rosa High. The price is going to be the same. But I, I don't know if that is even an option that we want to discuss.
Okay, I guess my question is, is. We move forward with either of these models, we're talking about what goes in year one. If we go to seven, twelve component, does that have to be done? Tomorrow, or do you come back to us with? Those alternative plans, because I feel like there's going to be a lot of, like, when I did the tour of Santa Rosa High School. The folks were pointing specifically to like the staff parking lot and the basketball. Um, ports as specific flat areas that had previously had temporaries on them in past years. Uh, but I feel like if we try to get that whole detailed conversation in by tomorrow. It's going to be really challenging.
Yeah, there's, um. Public capacity studies also. Utilize twenty seven in the class because it's used five out of six period a day. If you go to a six out of six period, you stay, you drastically increase the capacity level of each site. Right, so. Instead of having a room empty for one period of the day, you stand clearly. You know, even if it is a temporary relief, right, until we can't build. For long term, so. Those capacity studies do take into account some other variables that are just a choice, but.
And also the team want to present with the principal to make sure that the seven twelve would be.
Yeah, of, of the three, Hiner was the tightest, well, actually, to, to, to do in year one, uh, just more around bathrooms, uh, but. Each of the principles is very, Roger and I walked them, took them, and, uh, each of the principles is actually all three, sorry, uh, Montgomery, Hiner and Santa Rosa High.
So as far as intent tomorrow is, it's two, seven, twelves to publish with the first year of savings. You're able to come back after tomorrow with. More detailed advice on the campuses and the capacities and stuff like that. So we don't have to solve it in the next twenty four percent, you know? Yeah, forty.
It, it won't, it won't be comfortable at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
It will be a clunky transition for the first couple of years. But I know the principal's already brainstorming, I know that I got one from Principal Santos. In terms of what moves could be made, so it is possible to do the seven, twelve.
But so if. If Montgomery were to become the seven, twelve instead of Santa Rosa High in the first year, would that mean closing? Slater instead of Santa Rosa Middle, or do we close Santa Rosa Middle either way?
I. I really want to keep the three, three, one as closing the lowest in the world schools in each category as identified by. The committee report is that's moving the least number of, choose the number of students in year one. Wh- which I think is something that's a part of having to be able to, I mean. That come back in further conversations, I do think it's important that we stick with. The lowest enrollment, fewest students moving across all grade levels. Part of the three, three, one. Um. And then if there's a different facility configuration, then we can talk about after we've made that part of the choice and. If the campuses are keeping open, um, we can have that conversation more time.
It also has a ripple effect because closing Comstock and Santa Rosa is little. In year one is to allow them prep for the move over year two, which would be the TK's ceiling to pieces. Um, which, uh. So that's, it's kind of a, you want to, you know, empty it, there was more content, so we can do this second, do it the second year.
And the only thing in the room with all of this is assumptions. We're assuming that we're going to retain these numbers through all of this mess. Regardless, and we absolutely, the only thing we are guaranteed is the amount of attrition that's going to. Happen throughout this, whether it's through fear or through anger, uh, or through just fear necessity of it's not going to work. We are going to lose students through this and audition, um, that we need to be prepared for. These are assuming we have the same. That's not going to be around.
I want to get to Rusty Kirby before we're.
Oh, hey, uh, yeah, I had, it was a while ago, I had a quick comment on the three, four, zero. Um, model, if you can go back to that real quick. Um, one issue I didn't see on there that was brought up was, um. On this scenario, where? Where are the seventy French American charter students that are currently going to Slater? Where are they supposed to end up? Are they just going to Monte? It wasn't clear on this, what was happening to them?
Mon- Montgomery.
They're going to Montgomery? Okay, I just wanted to. Just wanted to fit that, fit that piece in there. I, I didn't see.
They're, they're a part of the Slater community right now, so that would be a, a shift as those Slater students move. The assumption was that the, assertive students would move with that.
Okay, I just. That assumption wasn't on there, so I just want to make sure that everyone was aware of what was intending to happen to them. Thanks.
Just making sure we're clear for tomorrow. The three, three, one with LC closing. And a three, four, zero. With maps as well.
Want to answer questions? Well, thank you, everyone. I know this discussion is not easy. Right, needing to turn.